Alrighty, let's begin. The call to order, special council meeting for the city of Bella Vista. We have one item on the agenda regarding STRs and by extension, septic. To kick it off, Cassie has been working with the Arkansas Department of Health and Taylor in putting together a citywide septic information package. So, I've asked her just to come and give us an overview so we know where we are and what's left to do.
Sure. So, Taylor is a wealth of knowledge when it comes to all this information, so she's been providing me everything that I need. And we have put information on the website so far in a few different places that are easily found by people looking for them. We're working on scheduling some social campaigns to run through the month of September to kind of put septic information in your face whether you want it or not, because a lot of people don't realize that they don't know the stuff that they don't know about it. So, we're going to come up with a schedule and make it kind of in an order that fits some other things that we're doing that will ultimately lead to the community event that CDS is planning in October, which will be open to anyone who wants to come and have a variety of speakers from water quality to septic systems, to state laws, stuff like that. And then if that is popular and depending on if there is a further need for that, Taylor and I have talked about doing additional events following that because, you know, it's impossible for people to make just one scheduled event. So, it'd be nice to be able to do that again if it's something that they would like to attend. I have talked to Brandon at Discover Bella Vista. He said they're going to be doing a mailing soon to the rental homeowners regarding a pay system that they're updating, I suppose, Doug. And he's going to provide some information that I'm going to give to him to include in that also. So, hopefully, the majority of the rental homeowners will get some information also that we can provide to them.
Septic?
Yes.
Good practices?
Yes. Yeah. So, if there's other places that you want information put out, or if there's specific information that you guys want to request, I am happy to include that and do my best to get it anywhere we can.
I think one of the things that would be great to, you guys have probably thought about it, but if not, some kind of maybe annual reminder. Maybe we do it during daylight savings, the end of daylight savings, or something like that that just says, "Don't forget. If you haven't pumped your tank in the last five to seven years, you might ought to have checked."
Mm-hmm.
You know, just kind of a reminder. On my septic system in my yard, I've got a diverter valve, so I have multiple different lateral lines, and I'm supposed to be switching that valve every six months, if I remember. I don't. So, I think any of that stuff is kind of creating awareness, and it's an ongoing communication program that way, not just at one time. We'll try to get the word out and hope for the best from that point forward.
Well, and with the population growing as much as it is here, I mean, you can put out all this information and just flood it out.
Yes.
And then, a year from now, there's so many people living here that have not seen that.
True.
So, it's just something you have to repeatedly do every few years.
Yeah. You might think as you're going through the collateral, what are the ones that could be on an annual refresh cycle for communication?
Yeah, it's a good idea.
How would you push that out now? Did you, direct mail or?
Um, we don't typically do direct mail, just because they're pretty costly, but, you know, we have a lot of luck with social media. We have, a lot of our residents are in the demographic that prefer to use Facebook, and that's where they get their information, so Facebook is pretty helpful for us. But, we also use Instagram, which typically catches the younger generations, and we don't, Twitter is not so much. We, what we use to reach the residents, but if we have something newsworthy, usually Twitter is where to pick that, so.
What else? What happened with the POA and some kind of an insert in their mailing?
Yeah. I'm glad you mentioned that, because I forgot to mention that, too. The POA is really good about including in their emails that go out, because they have all kinds of regular emails that go out. Any kind of blurb that I send them, so I'll be sure to send them information. And then, we also contribute monthly to their Connections Water Newsletter. And I've actually already scheduled those all out and sent them over because of the yard waste stuff that we're doing. But, I will have to see what I can add in addition to that to go along with this septic information that we'll push out.
Good. Thank you. One thing about anything going out from the A and B Commission, which we do have the ability to do now. So, 462 short terminals have been identified today. We have addresses, specific addresses for 400 of those. They identify them, and then they have to do the research, you know, to get the addresses, to get the owners, to get the parcel numbers, and things like that. So, that should catch up. I don't know how many of the short-term rentals will be left without specific addresses at some point, but Granicus is still going through the process. So, when we very first began this with Granicus, I think, I don't know, I'm just going to say the neighborhood in 350. Well, that's not too bad. That's not what we thought, right? But, they obviously had to go through the process moving forward to continue to identify the short terminals, so they're still really kind of going through that. What the top-end number's going to be at the end of the day, don't really know right now. I don't know when that, when we're going to see a leveling off.
Yeah.
So, that's just something, we've got about 60 that we don't have specific addresses for.
That's still quite a bit, though, that we can reach.
Oh, yeah, 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 for sure. I'm just letting you know there is a gap.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that program is really important as we've kind of tried to peel this onion a little bit, and we understand our septic systems, if they're maintained correctly, they can last a very long time.
Mm-hmm.
But, they have to be maintained correctly. And our, I think our concern is certainly far greater than just the 3% of the Bella Vista residents that are short-term rentals.
Right.
It really applies to all of us.
Everybody.
Yeah. And I think the more that we can do to educate and communicate to those, I think we're doing the right thing. We're being responsible as a city government.
Agreed.
And thank you for your efforts in that, in that direction.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Cassie.
Yeah.
Okay. I handed out to each of you, well, you put it on the desk. This is bullet points from the folks who spoke last night. Larry, I'm not sure, I don't think you were here when I handed it out.
Thanks.
There was also a gentleman who spoke in favor of no regulations and letting the market work its way through, and all the others were in favor of regulation of some Something that I would ask you to consider as well, two things actually, is we've had some people who have said, "Look, I'm just, I'm renting one bedroom for two people in my house, and I live in the house, and I use it to supplement my income." We may want to exclude them from being counted as an STR. It might be wise to still have them go through an inspection process, you know, for decks and that kind of thing, but it's something for your consideration.
Mayor.
Yep.
Relative to that, it might suggest that we consider it as a boarding house situation and label it as such, where you have an owner-occupant renting out, whether it's a bedroom or a lower level or upper level self-contained. It might be appropriate to use that terminology.
Okay.
Well, we have a use in our zoning code called bed and breakfast. And so, Taylor, I'm putting you on the spot. I don't mean to. If you can't respond right now, we can get back, but how are you seeing bed and breakfast distinguished from these STRs as we define them here?
So, I gave some little handouts of our current existing code to the city councilman about that specifically, just as a lame-use reminder from planning that we have lame-use in code that's similar to short-term rental. We just don't have a short-term rental yet, so the two most closely lamed uses we have identified in our code are bed and breakfast, but you have a copy of that, and all the requirements that they have to meet in order to get a conditional use permit to operate in R1 zone. But, bed and breakfast are normally owner-occupied, so the person or the couple that's running it have to live there, and then they rent out a max, I think two to maximum, four of their bedrooms, but they have to live there in order to operate a bed and breakfast in the R1. And then, you also have lodging use as well, and that's when normally someone doesn't live there, that's transient lodging, no one lives there, and that's a commercial use that's in the C-zone, C-zones. But, you also have the use chart that's in there at the very back showing where those are allowed by right with a conditional use permit. But, yeah, typically, bed and breakfast, the big difference is that someone lives there, and breakfast, obviously, is served. That is a requirement, and normally, short-term rentals don't have a full breakfast served by the person living there, so it doesn't really fit in that category at this time.
Another key point in that is that it has to be in an A1 district. Is that right?
Bed and breakfast? It requires a conditional use permit to be in the R1 zone, from the planning commission.
Something else that you may want to think about is...
I think it may.
Read it closely. It is separated.
With us this afternoon is Richard from the Arkansas Health Department. Thank you. And he waxed eloquent at our last work session, and so I've asked him to join us today to give us some guidance as we work through this. One of the things that we've been talking about is linking the number of people to the septic, rules and regulations from ADH. And we may want to actually include long-term rentals as well into a separate ordinance with the short-term rentals as to the actual occupancy, because I'm convinced that some of the long-term rentals, too, are probably way overused on their septic systems through their bedrooms. And that will give us a step forward so that if we decide that we want to turn our attention to the long term, we've got a basis at least for occupancy. So, that's something else that you may want to think about. Also at your desk, there is a letter back and forth from our chief inspector, Chief Building Inspector and Taylor, going back to July, where serious questions are asked.
That's it there, John.
Yeah.
You have it there?
Yeah.
Okay.
July 20 session.
Thank you. So, you may want to glance through that as well. Fred is a wealth of knowledge, as well as Taylor. And then finally, I think all of you got this last night from Abby Foster, who spoke at the council meeting. And she's put some comments in there, and in many places, she's agreed with what we're doing. So, there's a lot to digest. We have four proposed ordinances. Some of them are very close. And at this point, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Doug. He's been working on this for well over a year. Has far more information and is well-read than I suspect most of us. So, Doug, you'll take it away, please.
Mayor, before you start, we are going to separate out the septic issue and make that a separate issue. We're not including septic in the short-term rental ordinance. Is that right?
It's entirely up to you. But, you know, what I'm suggesting is you link the septic and the occupancy for both STRs and long-term. But, you don't have to do that. It's entirely up to what the council feels fit.
Personally, I think it would certainly make the STR ordinance a lot less complicated if the septic issue was separated as an individual issue.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah. So, me being the point person, I don't know how comfortable everyone on council is with that. But, you know, I have been working on it for a long time, and I would just like to reiterate once again that it was not me individually, right? I worked with CDS, Taylor, and Megan, Doug, and of course Derek, who's now departed for other pastures. And we put a lot of time, a lot of effort. First of all, just a conversation around situations, issues that were unfolding in Bella Vista that we were both made aware of, and not at the same time necessarily. I mean, my concern came from emails, from conversations of residents in the community, you know, coming to me with concerns about, about short-term rentals. I do think, and I've said, I stated this in another meeting, it's really interesting how these issues began to evolve after Vacation Rentals exited the business of managing short-term rentals. And I've been able to have a conversation with the gentleman's president of Vacation Rentals, his name is Dan Lombard, and he just, you know, just gave me a voiceover. Whenever they had that responsibility, they knew how important it was to be like Johnny on the spot if there was an issue taking place. People around their rentals that they had available knew who to call if something was unfolding, and as soon as Vacation Rentals received the call, they were there, and they were handling it, and they were managing it. Well, whenever that went away and then with the advent of BRBO, Airbnb, et cetera, where owners were able to list, you know, individually, some of that oversight was lost. Now, I'm not going to make a blanket statement about short-term rental owners and properties. I know that there are many of them that are managed very well, very tightly, and there probably are not, you know, many if any issues at some of them, so I want to recognize that right up front. I will tell you as well, through the data that I get from Granicus, that no one else has really had their eyes on but me. It's really hard to share, and when I say it's hard to share, you have to have somewhat of a skill set in Microsoft Excel in order to manipulate the data, kind of sort things out so it's useful to you. We have many short-term rentals that have like two bedrooms, and they have an occupancy of four people, right? That's some of the information you get back from Granicus. So, you'll get number of bedrooms, you get occupancy, et cetera. Just because I just mentioned that, something else we can do really easily, we get parcel numbers with these short-term rentals. So, I'm able to go into Benton County, Arkansas, go into the GIS base map, I can see the square footage of the home, they have the septic permits linked to the homes, and actually, CDS has even a higher level view than I do. I mean, I can get the original inspection on a lot of them, but I can't get the actual map on some of them that I know is available and that you guys can get your hands on. So, we're able to get a myriad of other information out of the data that Granicus gets to us, right? Through a little more manipulation, have the ability to see how many STRs are on a particular street, but I have to go through some gyrations to get there, because you get house numbers, you have to take the house numbers out, or you can't sort the data, blah, blah, blah. So, anyway, we do have the ability to look pretty granular at the STR business model that we have operating in Bella Vista right now. Okay. So, we work together very closely, right? And we sifted through, I don't even know, myriad of short-term rental ordinances from cities across the country, but particularly in Arkansas, two of the ones that were available. And we basically laid out kind of point by point the different intentions that were written into most of them. And there really are a lot of similarities, city to city to city, with some cities having their own twist based upon certain situations that they may be facing that maybe we aren't, or we are not yet. You know, some of the short-term rental ordinances are written because their cities are just becoming overrun, it's taking up all the available housing for people that want to move in or for current residents, they can't afford it any longer, the house prices are ballooning. That maybe isn't quite happening here yet, but it's something to think about because it certainly could, okay? Something to put in the back of your mind. So, anyway, we went by point by point, we laid everything out, and then we sat down around a table, and I don't know how many times we met. I have no idea. Many. And we would literally go around the table, we'd talk about what our position is on each point. We didn't always agree. Never had an argument, but we didn't necessarily always agree, but there was give and take in the process. It's like, okay, this is where I am, well, you know, I'm here, well, I'm here also, and I'm like, okay, I hear what you're saying, so we can either agree to something in between, or you know what? You've convinced me that this is where we need to be, and this is where we will start. Okay, I'm on these different points. At the end of the day, I think the original ordinance that we put together was a good one. I think it kind of hit the sweet spot in a way for the issues that are, that we are facing here in Bella Vista. Now, having said that, from the original ordinance that was passed around to everybody, from feedback that we had received, we made some adjustments already, because I thought they made sense. One is in the permitting fee. We kicked that one around. I was at one number, CDS was a little bit different number, because they had done some math and said, "Look, if we're going to manage this ordinance, we're going to really need to spend X amount of dollars for maybe a little additional manpower, et cetera. So, if we do this much per home, then we can get to the number, the permit fee that gives us the total number that we need to be able to manage this." Okay? I always had a lower number. So, we started out at $400, just kind of blanket. Take a step back, you heard, well, that's, you know, it's really not proportional. Well, did a little further reading, and I'm just kind of giving you an example, right, of how we went through this process. I'm reading an ordinance through Hot Springs, Arkansas, and they do their permitting fees by per headcount occupancy, right? So, one headcount, $50, two headcounts, $50 times two, it's $100, et cetera. So, it makes it proportional. That made sense to me. So, when we rewrote and did a second draft, included that change in there. I'm trying to think of the other change that we made.
What inspection?
The inspections. Now, we didn't really make the change on the inspections yet, but take a step back, you know, people had some pushback on inspections. I can understand it. I do think they're necessary, but do we need to do it every year or every two years? I don't know. Not necessarily. Maybe we do just a one-time safety inspection so we can go in, get our eyes on the bedrooms, see if there's two points of Bgress, right? Make sure that the smoke detectors, make sure that the fire extinguishers are there, get our eyes on the electrical. You know, we have had a lot of amateur contractors move into homes and make a lot of changes to homes themselves. They think they know what they're doing, but they don't, and there are potentially some serious situations that could be taking place in these homes through faulty wiring. Okay? Another thing, people, I don't think, think a lot about this potentially, but there are decks in Bella Vista, and I've experienced this at my house. I was doing kind of like a home remodel. I discovered through putting in a sliding glass door that the board from the deck that, you know, will fit up next to the rimboard in the home, there was no flashing, there was no water barrier, there's no nothing. My rimboard was all rotted out. And in pulling the board off away from the house, it had not been bolted to the rimboard. It was just shot on with like 16-penny nails. My deck is only 18 inches at one end and 36 inches on the other, so it's not necessarily a, you know, life or death maybe situation if it would pull away from the house and maybe fall over. But, we have decks that are 15 and 25 feet high in Bella Vista that go off down in ravines. I guarantee you, we have homes with unsafe decks, and one of these days, we're going to get a phone call, and one of us is going to pull away from the house because we're going to have eight, 10, 15 people on that deck. It's going to give away, and it's going to fall down into a ravine. It's just, it's a disaster waiting to happen.
It has happened.
Okay, in Bella Vista, so there you go. So, just to go and get a one-time look, okay, and get a feel, also for the inspectors to go in is to determine the number of bedrooms in a home. Short-term rental owners may not, may not like it, may not agree with it, but in a myriad of short-term rental ordinances that I have read, it isn't the short-term rental owner that determines the number of bedrooms, it's the city and the building inspector determines the number of bedrooms. Fred, where Fred Huddleston comes into play, is when we were writing the septic ordinance for new construction builds, you know, that you have to tie your occupancy to the size of the septic build out, there is a part of the code, I guess it's the fire code, that basically gives the head building inspector the ability, the authority to determine the number of bedrooms in that home. So, if you have a two-bedroom septic situation, and then it's pretty obvious that the home actually has three bedrooms, you can call it a study or a workout room, a craft room, whatever you want to call it. But, like if it looks like a duck, walks like a duck, and quacks like a duck, then it's probably a duck. And that building inspector has the authority to say, "You call what you want, that's a bedroom." So, then, that's when the, we require...
Deed restriction.
The deed restriction to be attached to that home, okay? So, that's why, you know, Fred and the city determining that there are veterans of a home should probably take precedence, okay? So, there's, there's one home, and I have an example, and I've got many of them, that it's a 2,200 square foot home, lists itself as having five bedrooms. Well, I went back, I pulled the address, I pulled the, oh my gosh, anyway, the number, I pulled it back on the GIS base map, and it was originally listed like it's a two-bedroom home, but now magically it has five. I'm not going to sit here and call, call people out here today and give names. That's, that's not what I'm about. I'm just saying, I know that there are homes that are listing more bedrooms than what they have, okay? And that's, they just are. So, but anyway, a one-time inspection, and maybe that will suffice and not do multiple inspections like year over year, or biannually, or whatever. Separate classifications. We maybe talked about it when we were going around the table, but I don't think we kind of vetted that one out really, but I think it makes sense, you know, that we have standalone housing, right? And then, if you have a bedroom, or if you have a space in your home, and you're going to live there, and you want to rent it out, we classify that differently, and maybe we treat it differently. I don't have an issue with that. Don't have it written into mine, but I'm certainly open to it. The last thing is the cap. We talked about maybe initiating a cap in the original ordinance, but when it was originally written, there were only like 350, I say only, maybe that's a high number in reality, but it's kind of hard to gauge that. There was 350, and I'm like, well, I don't know if it's really important that we try to initiate a cap right now. We have enough in the ordinance, there are going to be hurdles we know we're going to have to get over with the other city council members, so let's just let that one set to the side for right now, and if we think we need to do something with it later, we can. Okay? But now, that it's identified 462, and we really don't know that that's the top end yet, maybe it makes sense to go ahead and initiate a cap. And I go back to comments, especially one person made, "Be careful, they're coming, they're coming fast." And the next thing you know, you're going to lose your sense of community, your neighborhoods are not going to be neighborhoods any longer, you're not going to know your neighbors because you're not going to be your neighbors, you're not going to leave your garage doors open, et cetera. And also, it's going to start chipping into our affordable housing. It just will. So, maybe it makes sense that we initiate a cap. And that's another one I can have a conversation about. So, the initial ordinance that we started with, I think, was really, it's a good place to start because it was really vetted and really thought out and really thought through, but as I just mentioned, we have made some adjustments, and there are additional ones I'm certainly willing to talk about. You know, even the master painters, you know, from back in the day, Van Gogh's and Monet's and whoever they are, when they created their masterpieces, almost every one of them went back and looked at those masterpieces you see today, and there have been adjustments made to them in color, and, you know, how people are positioned, et cetera. So, we're not going to create a masterpiece today during this section. We just have to know that we've got to get it where we think it's pretty good, and if we need to go back and we need to adjust it, massage it a little bit later, we have the ability to do that, okay? Thinking through how to work through this, we have four on the table right now. I would think, I don't know, that the other three that have come before us since then probably used the original one that was presented, and then everybody kind of made their own individual tweaks. So, I talked through some of the things we already changed and are willing to, you know, adjust, and maybe, maybe the thing to do from the original one that was adjusted is kind of like go around the table and say, "Look, the original one I saw, this is what I would like to see done." Now, here's something else, and I'm just going to say it right up front so the audience understands, or anyone that might be listening to this, a live stream, however this is being done. Yeah, I guess we are being streamed. Not all six city council members have to agree on an ordinance, the final one. Four is the majority, right? But, it could be three, and the mayor breaks the tie. So, we, where we need to get to is a consensus. It would be great if all six could agree. I don't know if we're going to get there or not, but we're all going to have to be willing to kind of negotiate, maybe fall back a little bit on a position where we really think we're steadfast on, and maybe there are some stakes in the ground that can't be moved. But again, we just need to get to a consensus, and I think it's important that we do this for the residents of Bella Vista, for the health of the city. I really do. Because the more I hear, the more information on septic systems, and I'll take, I'll take a step back, so we're talking about maybe leaving septic out of this. I don't really think that's the thing to do personally. But, even if you take the septic out of it, let's take it out completely, does it make any sense in a single family? any sense in a single family residential home to have, I'm going to, I'll even set the number low, eight, especially 10, 12, 14, 16 people coming and going every weekend on the street in a neighborhood where you probably have two, maybe four people at the most living on either side of you. Now, on the east side, the situation's a little different than the west side. I understand that because there are more families over there. But again, doesn't make sense to have 10, 12, 14 people coming and going, week in and week out, and maybe even more times than that per week during the summer. I think it would make anyone uncomfortable, and I don't think anybody would probably, you know, I'm not trying to speak for everybody. I wouldn't be comfortable with it. And, you know, somebody asked a question last night, I think it was the first speaker during our feedback, or, you know, during our public comment, wanted to know if any of the city council members owned or had any short-term rentals ourselves. I answered, "I don't." And I don't know if anyone else here does. I don't. I will say this, though, on our street, we just had a home up for sale, Cherry Home on the green, number par three, Skysdale Golf Course, and it was available, and people up and down the street were on pins and needles. Our neighborhood know, everybody knows everyone. Everybody walks up and down the street. Everyone has conversations. Everybody watches everybody's back. You know, it's just that kind. It's a wonderful neighborhood. That one home that is sitting there is kind of like right in the middle of everything. And I know it would change the dynamic of our street. It just would, right? Because if you take that home, and if you don't have any occupancy limits on it, it's like 1,800 square feet, it has three bedrooms, so you say, "Well, two people per bedroom." Let's just say you're limited at that. Then you have the living room, you can put a fold-out couch in. Then you've got a sunroom, maybe you could call that a bedroom as well. You could put 10 people in an 1,800 square foot home, right? And it's a golf, it's basically, you're going to have probably more than likely a lot of more golfers in there or anything else. Pack them in there, you know, every weekend, playing golf all day long, coming back to the place, getting back on the deck, right? Barbecuing, beer, music. I'm just saying, this is a scenario, right, that a lot of our residents are having to live like right now. I don't know. You'd be the judge, you know? I know how I feel about it, but I, it just doesn't feel like that's the right thing to do for our, you know, to place our permanent residents in that situation and expect that they should just have to live with it. And people can say, "Well, you know, we have ordinances, we have this and that noise, and parking, and..." Yes, we do. But I fall back on again, it is not up to the city or the mayor, or the neighbors to end up being managers of that property. That's up to the short-term rental owners. They own it, it's a business, they're making money out of it, and they should be responsible for what's taking place at that property. I'll tell you, the more people you have, the more issues you're going to have. So anyway, regardless of whether you use the septic situation, or you're just saying, "What makes sense on occupancy? What type of numbers do make sense?" And I realize and understand, some homes are bigger than others, right? Maybe you've got a 5,000 square foot home, maybe 10 people make sense in a 5,000 square foot home, but not in an 1,800, 2,300, or 2,800 square foot home, and we have a lot of those. We have a 3,200 square foot home that has occupancy limit of 17 people. That home is like 20 feet away from the home right next door to it, that deck is right by the master bedroom. It causes all kinds of issues. But I could go through a myriad of those examples, that's just one. So anyway, I'm just going to say, I'll wrap it up, and say, "Maybe we kind of go around the table and say what we're willing to accept, what we're not, and see if we can't come to some similarities, and see if we can't get something put together and finalize and get it before the council."
Agreed.
So, I'm sorry, do you want to just have a comment, or you just want to start?
I'll start the process, but have a comment.
Can I just provide one point before you start? There was another change from the original that's pretty significant that was discussed that we haven't talked. That was that we removed the web-based list of addresses on the city website. That was a safety concern that some people talked about, and that in Mr. Fowler's latest has been removed. So I just wanted to add that.
Um, there was one other comment I was going to make that was relevant, but I have to take a lot of the other.
I wanted to start and just say thank you, Doug, for the manner in which that was presented. I think that's reasonable. I share your objective here that we kind of cipher out. If not today, in the near future, we cipher out, you know, where can the city council line up? Not necessarily unanimously, but in consensus, in sufficient votes to support an ordinance that does balance protecting our neighborhoods with property right owners. We're trying to do right by both sides of those. So I appreciate the way that's been presented, and the adjustments that have been made from the original. I think those are, make me feel more comfortable about it. This topic is kind of, Jerry brought it up first, and he was talking about taking septic out of it, and I wonder if what you mean by taking septic out of it is taking some kind of occupancy maximum tied to septic? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's talk about occupancy maximums, whether they're driven by septic or they're just said, which I contemplated that too, just saying, "Hey, you know what? For the reasons of impacts to the neighborhoods, maybe no short-term rental should have more than 10 guests in it at any time." Maybe that's consistent with the neighborhood that, you know, have 10 people in a short-term rental. But I want to really be careful that we don't adopt an ordinance that we cannot enforce. And so I've tried to think through how we enforce these occupancy maximums. In fact, I had a conversation with Doug about this a little bit. City staff, I kind of want Doug, just sit me down, sit me down and kind of talk me through the process of how do we write the very first citation to a short-term rental operator that is exceeding the maximum that we've determined is their maximum, either by way of their septic capacity or by their bedroom capacity? Either one of those. Let's say we've got a number, and for this house, the number is eight people. What we do, how's, what's the first time the city writes a violation of a maximum occupancy? How do we go through that process?
Can I just do one thing? I just want you to know, again, that the first thing, and I read this in one ordinance, through VRVO or Airbnb, remember, it lists occupancy. The first thing is you can't list your home for any more occupancy than what is permitted by the city. So that's one thing you can do, right?
Well, we didn't make that illegal, though. None of our ordinances make that illegal, how you market it. Then when you go...
But you're asking, "How do you know if they are marketing?"
Well, how do we write that first? Let's let Doug take a shot. How do you write that first violation?
Well, I think that your section in most of these ordinances has a violation listed. So if someone gets a permit from us, and the house is permitted for six or eight, and we, or Granicus finds a listing for 10 or 14, that's violation number one.
Okay, so they have marketed the property for more than we would want them to have occupy the property, right?
Correct.
Now, I think our city attorney wants to prosecute that, and he goes before the judge, and the judge is going to say, "Your ordinance says they cannot occupy for more than eight people. Where is the proof that they occupied by more than eight?" Not that they marketed something, may or may not have had guests at that.
I mean, I don't know how we walk into a house and determine if there's 20 people there.
Exactly.
12 are staying and eight are not, or 14 are staying.
I don't need that.
But I mean, I think it would just be off of the permit versus the market. You want to add to that?
I think it's two different things. I think currently, I was applying and marketing are two different aspects. I mean, if you have a party of 30 people going on near a lake, that's different than them hosting 10 people. So it's two different, I think.
You're going to have to depend on the people who live in the area to let you know what's going on.
Witnesses?
Yeah.
Neighbors?
Yeah.
I think they're...
Because you're going to have to have that. You're not going to, you're not going to take, "He said, she said." But the neighbors will know. They can count.
Well, they can count.
And they will have to, you know, verify, "Yeah, that happened." And if they're not willing to do that, then we don't have anything.
Right.
So we need help from the neighborhood as to who violated. And once you do that, you're right to take it up because you had 12 people and your permit said eight. Period. And you see, you know, it's not necessarily that simple because you've got to get people to come forward, and people don't want to come forward. How many times in my career, and James, five years here, you know, people ain't coming forward? Well, they take it three days later. I can't help you. But if you talk to me, then I can help you. It's going to be up to the people. You know, and some people, even after we pass this, and we've even done it once or twice and run through the system, they're still going to be reluctant to call. And it's an education of the other side, too. Because if they're not going to help, we're not going to fix it. There's no way you can fix it without somebody's help.
Jim, do you see it as they witnessed 10 people go into the house, and therefore they can call the city?
It would take a little more than that, but you know, if you're living next door, you can tell at night what's going on, okay?
Let's check, city attorney, is that easy to take that in before the judge?
I mean, you have to prove beyond a reasonable doubt that someone would have violated. So one of the concerns that I would have prosecuting the case is, how do you know they stayed overnight unless you saw them go in that evening and saw the same people go out that morning? You know, that would be some evidence. Obviously, if they've marketed it for 10, that's some evidence as well.
Circumstantial, right.
Yes. And then that'd be direct evidence. You know, good enforcement is going to go knock on the door when there's a complaint and say, "Hello, can you tell me how many people are staying in this house?" You know, they may not answer. They may say, "Yeah, we got a dozen people," or whatever. I mean, so good investigation, some people may tell them themselves. I mean, they may say, "I'm not telling you anything. Shut the door." You know, that's, but that's the case in all of criminal enforcement. I mean, it's a matter of can you get enough information together? Will people give the statement? Can you put two and two together? Can you see something? Can you prove it?
I think my point to all that was, is can we move the target slightly and make it against the law to market to a certain...
Right, well, so, may I? Because, you know, as we talk through this, because, oh my God, I only brought a portion of what I have, okay? And I'm trying to remember what I have at my fingertips, and this was presented to us or given to us. A gentleman tried to read it last night and didn't have time here. Sent it out by email today. First of all, and Taylor just left the room, she sent an email, I guess it was last week, with examples from like four other cities. And in one of those ordinances, it was written in there that if a company, I'm just going to word it like this, may not be exactly like this, if a company, which would be VRVO, VRVO or Airbnb or whatever, if they violate the city ordinances, like in any way, shape, or form that are written for that particular city, they will be banned from doing business in that city. Okay? Now, I read, this is from the VAAL, okay? Part of their rental agreement.
Are you talking one violation?
I don't know if it's one or not. I'd have to go back and read it specifically. Well, I don't know if it's one or not. I'm just saying, it's written in there, and maybe it's continually, maybe it's three. I don't know how many violations. I'm just saying, they wrote it in their code that if these booking agencies violate that city's ordinances, you know, in any way, then they could be banned from doing business in that city. So this is, again, VAAL. "The maximum number of people that may occupy the vacation rental is indicated in the listing description. For clarification, this number applies to all overnight guests, day visitors, and children. Occupancy over the indicated capacity may result in immediate removal of you and other members of your party from the vacation rental in Fort Worth, Jerro, and Mount Spay." So they have it written right into their rental agreement with whoever's saying, "I want to rent that property."
And you know, if you're talking about first offense, well, you can't hardly fire anybody anymore for a first offense. It's a verbal warning and a written warning, and then we go ahead and show you the door. So in this case, we could do the same route. The first time, we're knocking on the door, we're notifying the owner, even though he had lived here, and we're notifying the keeper of the house. Second time, it's on paper, notify both of them again. And then the third time, permit, find everything, all works.
I think Mr. Kelly wants to say something.
I just, I want to say that just looking at Mr. Fowler's proposal, it would be very easy to make a small addition to section six, over, excuse me, on section five, somewhere either at the bottom of page two or top of page three, or some, it would be top of page three. It currently says that a short-term rental shall be used for purposes of overnight guest accommodation and shall not be marketed or used for receptions, parties, weddings, or other wedding-related parties, corporate meetings, or similar activities, and I think you could just add to that, nor shall short-term rentals be listed for rent for more persons than are permitted by the city permit, or something, I mean, better worded than that. And that way, the marketing of it would be a violation.
Yes, that seems to me...
And that would catch a lot of it. Now, if they're really, if they mark, say they market it correctly, it's capped at eight, for just, for example. And so, and it's listed as eight on Airbnb, and they list the eight, I don't know how all it works, but let's say it's all legit in the sign-up, it's all squared away, it's marketed correctly, but those eight people have a couple of friends, they'll call us down a favor, and they're going to crash in the floor because they're leasing the Airbnb, and there's really 10 in there. Well, you know, that's over occupancy, that's a violation. So you have, that's not a marketing question, that would be purely an occupancy issue.
Right.
But if they were over...
The most difficult prosecutor, I think.
Yeah, but if you had it listed, we'll lease it to 10, and the permit's only eight, and the ordinance says you can only market it for up to eight, which is what the total permit, then that would be much easier enforcement situation.
Jason, if you, as a prosecutor, have an affidavit from a next-door neighbor who says they're quite sure they exceeded their occupancy, is that enough to write a citation?
No, they would have to come testify in court. Oh, well, well, think about timing here, though, Steve, because you, all right, so it's 11 o'clock at night on Friday night, they're overoccupying. Well, that, when are they going to write the affidavit? When, and then, you know, maybe Tuesday, we'll get around, and they're gone. It's, you know, Sunday night, they're going to be gone. So it's going to have to be some sort of scenario where an enforcement officer or police officer can go out there at ungodly hours when these things happen
Yeah.
and be able to effectively do something.
Right.
And that goes for noise, and it goes for public drinking, and it goes for all the other stuff, too.
True, and I could see, you know, it's not a function of, it's capped at eight, and then the two college buddies come over, and there's 10 people back there having a party, therefore they've violated the maximum occupancy. I don't think that's the...
Well, if they intend to leave, if they're not staying overnight, they're just, I mean, there's nothing that says you couldn't have additional guests.
Right.
There's nothing that says you can't have a party. You can't just market it and say, "Have your wedding party at 123 Main Street." It has to be marketed for overnight accommodation.
I don't think any of us see, I don't think any of us see the police knocking at the door at 2:00 in the morning and saying, "Okay, lineup time, we're going to count your guests."
Well, they'd have to have some reason to do that.
Well, yeah.
And in some, there's no obligation to answer the door when there's a knock-in either.
Okay, there's that. So that's why moving the target towards how it would be marketed would be much more effective.
That's a good idea about the marketing, but I think it's still a good idea to have a rule. I mean, this, go out on the street, it says 35 miles an hour, and there's people driving 40 and 45, and they don't get stopped. That doesn't mean it's a bad idea to say 35.
No, no, but it is enforceable.
Yeah. Marketing would make it better.
So just so you know, there are ordinances that have a hard, fast rule, this is the number. And then there are ordinances that say, "This is the occupancy, you can have no more than 50% more people at the home at any given time." You know, like from, from the time of whatever to whatever, you know, 10 o'clock or midnight or whatever. So they are written. They're different.
Yep.
One thing I would like to do, Steve, while we're doing it, because we do have Richard here, when he was here the other night, the septic, and look, we're a city council, we're six members, and his knowledge is invaluable, I think, and we can all listen to him. Doesn't mean that at the end of the day, anybody listens to him and anybody follows what his recommendation may be one way or the other, right? I mean, we don't have to follow what he says, but I think it's a good idea to really think about it. And I asked the other day, Richard, if you recall, if it would be a good idea, I think, to write an ordinance, or at least you thought it was a good idea. And then I asked if there's any wiggle room, right? If it's a two-bedroom septic, that's four people, so is a wiggle room. Can you say four plus two? Is that out of the realm, you know, to try to get a little breathing room there potentially? Can you, Richard, give some feedback on that? I didn't, you know what, this is my takeaway from the other night, is I don't know if you thought that was a very good idea or not, but do you have any, just feedback for us to think about?
Yeah, you know, how we talked about how the water usage, that would use for sizing systems in Belavista is a hundred and fifty gallons per bedroom. And other parts of the county and the state, we don't use a hundred and fifty gallons per bedroom, it's a hundred and fifty for the first bedroom, a hundred and twenty for the second, and then a hundred for the third, and then fifty gallons more per additional bedroom. So, that water usage increases again at a decreasing rate, you know, so you don't have it, it's not going up to a hundred and fifty gallons per bedroom. That's the, one of the little safety features built into the, some of the septic system design in Belavista is because we are using that higher estimated water usage per bedroom. So, a septic system built in another part of the county, I would say, two people per bedroom, per house. In Belavista, for these rules, I think you can go three people per bedroom per house just because the systems are sized just a little bit larger.
And that's a hard, fast rule, is that right?
Which?
That the systems are sized up a little bit in ordinance?
They are. The water usage is a little bit different.
For what time period?
And what, you want to start?
Well, that's a good question because it was, it should have always been that way, but I think it was caught probably, I don't know, fifteen years or so ago, it was caught. So, oh yeah, we need to be doing this at a hundred and fifty gallons per bedroom. So, there's going to be some houses out there, of course, that are probably sized based on that other water usage and stoward use in here. But I think instead of just saying, and again, you know, I'm talking about if you've got one of these things that isn't occupied seven days a week, you know, all the time, you have done a rest period in it for the septic system, too, that could help. So, I think going at a maximum occupancy of three people per bedroom would probably be pretty safe to have in this situation.
There would be three people per designated bedroom on the plan. In other words, if the septic is a two-bedroom house or a three-bedroom house, you would end up with three at those two or three or four.
Yeah, whatever the system was sized for. So, like you were talking about earlier where they had a two-bedroom septic system and now they're, you know, saying the house is a five-bedroom, really, really needs to be based on that two-bedroom septic system. Am I right?
Yeah, that was like forty years ago.
Is it easy enough for a member of city staff to look at the permit and know this is how many, this is how many bedrooms that septic is designed?
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, Steve, I've got some of them, I've printed out right here.
The council needs to remember, too, is that when we did the issue with the house reviews and the number of septics in the building permit, when we went through that, that was the first phase. We had a second phase that we were going to talk about implementing, and that had to do with dealing with the issue of additions to a house with septic system, but it had to do with the counting of the bedroom and all those kinds of things. So, some of this is still on the table from what we had intended to do before.
And what, Steve's, I only saw it in one, that had a timeframe between the first violation and the second. One of them was many as five, that's a long time to give somebody, cut somebody some slack. And that number's got to be down to like six months to a year between violations.
Yeah, I think, I think so, too. I, I think, I think that makes sense as far as trying to chase down an ordinance that I think is very difficult to enforce. If we could adjust the target there, cover the marketing side of it, that's where you can capture, I think, easily. You're in violation because you're marketing for more capacity than you have septic capacity.
I don't disagree. And like I said, I mean, I'm willing to work. I mean, you know, we did what we could, and there are a lot of other smart people in the room, right? So, that makes sense to me.
I think that. I can close out my comments for now. I do believe also, the owner-occupied rentals, like a downstairs rental or a one-room rental, I'd like to see those exempt from this. These are people that are having, maybe having a hard time meeting their mortgage payment, and they're just trying to do something in the privacy of their own home. They don't need us walking through there, looking around their bedrooms and stuff and making sure everything's okay. If it's owner-occupied, I hope we can make it exempt. And then finally, health and safety inspections, yeah, I just, I just felt like it was a big burden on the city. I believe we would need more staff if we're going to do that every year. So, if we could, if we could stretch that out and say, you're going to have to do that once every X number of years, I could get on board with that, too.
I have a question about that. On the owner-occupied issue, I see the rationale for being exempt from some of these inspections and whatnot, but by law, you're not exempt from the taxes, are you?
No.
So, you still need to identify as people.
Yeah, you still identify, you still are listed, yes.
One of, one of the keys, I think, to this is if you go back to the Garland County issue that Attorney Kelly sent us out here six months ago, it dealt with several subdivisions where one of the properties was, the owner died and the family took it over, and then they rented it out like a vacation rental thing. And the neighbors took them to court, saying it was in violation of the covenants for the, for that, for those subdivisions. And the court, when they looked at it, and it brings to my point, is that I think we need the word nuisance defined as a violation of our ordinance. And the nuisance means that you get a black mark. When we go to your renewal, it might be if you get two black marks, your permit gets pulled and you can no longer operate for six months or something. But I think we need the word nuisance defined. What the court said is that nuisance is defined as the conduct of one, one landowner that unreasonably interferes with the use and enjoyment of lands of another and includes conduct on property that disturbs the peaceful, quiet, and undisturbed use and enjoyment of the nearby properties.
Well, the one judge went with the group, and then on appeal, they lost it.
Well, let's ask, let's ask Mr. Kelly on nuisance.
Nuisance is, I think you're going to find, well, I know you're going to find, have to be declared by the court. We generally use the term nuisance as like they're loud and they're drinking, but we have very specific ordinances that prohibit very specific activity, not just they're a nuisance. Legal nuisances are declared by a court. And yes, it does meet that definition of Mr. Welm's Red, but what that really would do was, would be to permit the neighbor to go to Circuit Court and get an injunction against them, declaring it a nuisance and then shutting it down. So, we're kind of conflating terms a little bit. There is, and this came up last night to an extent, too, and that is the neighbors want to have a say in whether there's a permit or not. And the neighbors want to have a say in whether it's revoked or not. That is absolutely constitutionally illegal. I don't really, they're not intending it for it to be, but I can't, we can't as a city condition and say someone's met all of our requirements, but you better convince your neighbor to say it's okay or you're not going to get it. That's not going to meet any legal test. Obviously, I think there, I'm not saying there's not some way to take into consideration the public. I mean, obviously, in cities where they go the route of conditional use permit, which we're not doing, but when you go down the route of conditional use permit, you get public statement and comment about a particular property and the traffic and all that sort of stuff, and that does come into play in that, but it's not necessarily a neighbor veto. And what I'm hearing is that there really wants to be, there really a desire for a neighbor veto, and that sort of a concept is not going to work.
Yeah, that struck me as very unworkable when it was brought. I can understand why somebody would bring it up, but I thought that was extremely unworkable.
And I don't disagree with you, Jason, but you know, they, it's written into their code in Joplin, Missouri. If you live within a hundred and eighty-five feet...
That's a different state.
I'm not, I'm not saying it's right.
I have serious constitutional concerns about that.
I'm not, I'm not an advocate of it. I'm just saying that it is written in, too, you know, into theirs.
They wouldn't sleep any good if somebody fired.
Well, no, I, I'm not saying it's, what I'm saying is, is that some, some cities that don't try to do things the right way, Portland, let me back up, I'm not saying Joplin didn't try and do things the right way. What I'm trying to say is there are a lot of cities that would rather just do it and deal with the consequences later and do what they can, and then other cities that would rather not go down that risk and potentially have a problem, knowing that it's going to be a problem looking forward, is what I'm saying.
So, let me just recap for a second. I think we've maybe got a consensus based on, Richard is the expert, in Belavista, three people per bedroom, but the number of people or the occupancy is based on the number of bedrooms that originally show on the septic plan. Is that correct?
Unless they've gotten a new plan approved where they've increased the size of it.
Okay.
Most current permit.
That's fair. We've also, I think, got a consensus on exempting the owner-occupied.
Mm-hmm.
I think we've got consensus on one initial inspection, and there's now a couple of other things that we have to talk about. One is the cost of the permit and the cost of the inspection. So, Doug and I sat down, and if we cap it at five hundred, for example, we believe that's doable for one FTE who would have to be hired. And when you price it out, you probably have to start at twenty dollars an hour, given, you know, the current marketplace, and you throw in the benefits of twenty-eight percent, it comes out to an amount of fifty-something, and you divide it by five hundred, it works out to a hundred and six dollars and fifty cents to have that permit investigated and everything else by the clerk and then issue the permit. On the inspection side, because in mine, I had not put an inspection in because mine was initially just going to be a stopgap to actually get us where we are now. So, I'm delighted that we're having this conversation so early because I didn't think it was going to happen. So, I mentioned to Doug, so what would be a reasonable cost for, I imagine, a building inspector to go out and actually do, you know, the checklist and everything else? Any idea?
I mean, a bureau could probably have an hour for a code officer to go do an inspection or a building inspector.
Okay.
So, if you kept it at five hundred, I mean, initially, you would have several in the first few months, and then it would plan out as people renew, but I haven't put a pencil to the per-hour fee for just inspections, but I would think that on days when they have fewer building inspections, they could get several short-term rental inspections done, and then some days they're just completely loaded with building inspections, you may have to push them.
And the other thing to consider is that if there has to be a reinspection.
If there's a problem, then there will be a reinspection.
Right. And that costs...
Reinspections ought to be a charge because the list of what...
That's the way we handle it now.
The list of what needs to be complied with is available, available either in the checklist that the CDS uses or available somewheres out in the system of what needs to be complied with.
Okay. So, there's still a question, Mark, so you'd have to sharpen your pencil?
So, if you, five hundred is, let's just say, five hundred is the limit. Five people, I'm just doing an average, this is back of the envelope math. Five hundred times five people times fifty dollars per head count would be a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That's what that would be.
And that's, I've, I've, well, that's the cost of, or is that, that's the revenue generated?
Yes, yes.
That, for, for the inspection?
No, 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 for the permit.
Okay, for the permit, all right.
And that would pay for, you know, the inspectors, you know.
Jason, let me know if this is legal. We have, well, no, it's, it's a contract kind of thing.
Okay.
We have an city inspector who's going to go do some of this, okay? And we've got a cap on what it's going to cost. Could we get private people certified by the city and tell them, this is what you can charge? And then they would be between them and that person, the homeowner.
There's a way to do that.
Like a house inspection professional?
Yeah, you know, hire guys on the outside, tell them, you know, we got X number of houses, this is what you can charge, same price we would charge.
As long as those people, we would, in some way certify those inspectors in some fashion.
Right, yeah.
There's a way to do that.
You know, somebody, you know, part-time looking for something to do, can do a couple here and a couple there and make himself some bucks and take some of the burden off of you guys.
Possibly take all the burden off of them.
Well, we'll need to, we're talking, we'll need to have another ordinance that would create a program for regulating and licensing rental inspectors.
Well, Jason, if we just tapped into existing home inspection people, who I assume have some kind of permit from the state?
Yes.
Yes. Home inspection people have a permit from the state. If we hand them the checklist and say, this is the service you're going to provide, what you charge is open to the market, there's going to be, there's going to be thirty people who want to do this. Let the open market determine what's the fair price.
You can do that.
Just so long as the permit applicant brings back their signed-off checklist, they've had it inspected, it meets with the inspectors.
You can do that, but, but think about those that operate on the edges, okay? There'll be people who'll get you clear, you know, but maybe they charge a little more or they, I mean, we would never countenance that sort of thing, but I'm going to tell you.
It could happen.
It could happen. I mean, you tell them, I don't, I don't want to impugn anyone's integrity, and if they have a license of some sort, they obviously want to keep it.
It becomes a license to steal.
But, you know, one of the things that, all right, I don't want to overcomplicate. Yes, there's a way to do it. If you want to go down that road, we'll need to, to think about it, and, and there's going to be kind of another branch to this we'll need to work on.
Yeah, I think Larry wants to say something.
I think you'd want the inspectors as their third party to be licensed inspectors or have a current license for doing something.
Depends on what you're asking them to inspect. If you include electrical in this inspection, then that needs to be licensed.
Well, I think GFIs would be one of the things that they'd have to check for.
Home inspectors are not licensed electrical inspectors.
Is electric one of the things on our checklist, other than the plug-in works?
It should be.
If you recall, the draft allowed the administration basically to come up with a list of safety criteria, and there was a draft of that, sort of an example that Taylor, I think, drafted, or someone over in the staff drafted, when they passed out to you sort of a sample application packet that we had thought of at one point. So, they'd be inspecting against known standards. So, I've got a couple of things, just loose ends sort of things that I think are implicated by what I'm hearing. All right, so, we're not talking, we're talking about a safety inspection, but not a septic inspection.
Well, I was going to bring that up.
Okay, all right, well, so I'll leave that where it is, and then y'all can discuss it. And then, we've got a lot of short-term rentals that don't use septic tanks, so what are they based the occupancy on for those that are on sanitary sewer? And will that be different than the ones that are on septic? You need to think about that.
I thought it was written in there that it is.
One of them's, one of them is in there.
Well, we have two people per bedroom plus two.
Yes.
So, now maybe, I don't know, three people per bedroom plus two.
Okay, I think Jerry wants to say something.
Does anybody give any thoughts about what quagmire we're creating here?
Well, so far, it's not bad, believe me.
Well, I mean, we got inspection after inspection.
No, we're only talking one inspection.
Well, we're talking, we're talking about a safety inspection, an electrical inspection.
No, that's all the same inspection.
It's all part of that.
Because all of our, all of our building folks have all the necessary permits from the state, electrical, plumbing, the whole works.
But I think this could be tailored to where if that wasn't required, code officer could do this, depending on how...
We're talking about someone else doing the inspection.
It could be a code enforcement person.
Maybe it should be.
You know?
And then we're talking about a, about a head count. I mean, we, we cannot put the police department in a position of counting, you know, counting people in a, in a particular location because it's, I got an...
Well, we've been talking about, let's zero in on the marketing.
How are you going to, how are you going to cite a, a marketing agency that's in Tennessee? How are you going to cite them? I mean, how are you...
Because they signed it, they take care of it.
Okay, just a second, Jason's going to...
The ordinance itself is going to apply to the owner. We talk about any person operating in violation of the ordinance, and we can work on that language a little bit and tailor it, but we want to be able to hold a person accountable for that who's the owner, basically. Or, it's a good question, Jerry. I mean, I think we need to, we probably need to work on our, on our thinking about that in terms of enforcement because we say now that any person operating a short-term rental in violation of this ordinance shall, and then be penalized, and we go through all the fines. We probably need to go about saying some other people who would be responsible, who We probably need to go about saying some other people who would be responsible, who could be violating. But you are correct, if we're dealing with anyone we're trying to get for a violation of a local ordinance that is not local, that's always very difficult.
Well, you've got the same situation of homeowner next door calls and says, "Hey, the house next door, the rental next door is not supposed to have more than eight people there. They had 20 people there last night." They're gone. The homeowner next door, he's got no, he has no, well, he's got a complaint, but he's got no justification for any type of-
Well, he can't wait till the next day to call. He's got to call right then.
Okay, so if he calls right then, then who's going to go count the people?
Not going to door. If they answer, you can ask them, if they won't talk to you, that's it, walk away, unless you can see it through the door.
But who's going to do that?
The police or the enforcement during the day.
No, you're not going to send, that's just, that's going too far, taking the-
That's part of the job.
But, no, it's not counting people, no. That is not part of the police department's job.
But he's enforcing, he's enforcing an ordinance, same as the police enforce ordinances all the time.
That will be, that will be a mistake, that will be wrong, put the police department in a position of going and knocking on people on a, on a short-term rental door to determine how many people are inside.
So who do you think should do it?
Well, they've been called already on short-term rentals, and that one party recently on like Brittany-
Noise issues, you've got parking issues, you've got all sorts of things.
Jerry, I share your concern, and that's why I've said, the focus, if we can effectively shift the focus to the short-term rental operator and how they are marketing, because I think if you tell the short-term rental operator, "Based on your septic capacity, your maximum is eight, and we're going to monitor how you market it. And if we see you marketing other than that, we're going to send you the nastygram that says, 'You're only entitled to market for eight, this is your first warning.'" I think, I think they will cooperate.
So they, so they marketed for eight, and there's, you know, they regularly, 12 people in the house, or 12 people. I mean, you, at one point, there was a requirement for a representative, a person that represented the owner.
It's still in there.
Okay, it's still in there.
It's still in there.
Alright, good, it's still there. But that person had to live within 50 miles. If there's going to be someone that's going to go into that house, they're, they're supposed to be responsible for what's taking place in that short-term rental. They're supposed to be the responsible party.
Yeah.
And if there's going to be someone go knock on the door and see how many people are there, it ought to be that person, not the police department. You know, it ought to be that person. I mean, that's person ought to be called, you know, person next door calls at midnight. Whatever time they call, then that person that's responsible for that particular property should be the person that's called to go deal with the situation.
That would be the first call.
Yes, because understanding that-
And I've got a portion in here that speaks to that, that the first person to be called is the person responsible for that property, and then if there's no action taken, then the next step occurs.
And they'll get there the next day, and the people say, "Ah, we didn't violate." It's got to, it's got to be checked as it's called.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
But you're not coming from 50 miles away.
No.
That's why you're going to, after hours, that's why you're going to call the policeman, because that's what we pay them for.
I have a question, maybe this is already covered in one of our drafts, but I'm thinking if you're in a commercial area and you're on sewer, I'm concerned about this being applicable. Examples, what I'm concerned about is Cooper has that, those cabins on Kingsland. We have people building a bike shop with short-term rental stuff above it.
Coming in front.
So, yeah, so now we're going to say, suppose we say, "Okay, there's only 500 permits, and there's 462," people rush out and get them, and then this guy built the bike, "Oh, sorry, you can't have a permit, we already have 500." Because a bunch of people, what we're worried about is people with houses next to somebody else's house. We're not worried about the bike shop having short-term, that's not a problem, because it's in a commercial area, it's on sewer. Or what Cooper's been operating, it's, you know, it's in a commercial area, it's not-
Well, it's actually R2 where Cooper is.
I think it's-
It's a commercial. But he's on sewer, he's on sewer, but I think it's in R2, yes.
And the other place I'm kind of worried about, and maybe this all works out, just as an example, the Greens. Here's a legacy place, it's been operating forever, does short-term rentals, there's no problems, never has, been operating, I don't even know how long, at least 20 years probably. And so we're going to, everybody's going to run out, get 500 permits, and we'll say, "Oh, well, no, you can't do that anymore, because we've run out of permits." That makes no sense.
Well, what's your recommendation?
Well, on those other guys, I think we could solve it by saying it doesn't apply to commercial, and they don't even count in the 500. And I don't know how to handle the Green, I'm just raising it as an issue, I think.
But if we ever, if we should ever, some point in time, have a business licensing ordinance, are we going to limit it to 500 businesses? Can't have you more than 500, that's it?
It's not the same conversation.
Not even close.
It's not. Hey, Jerry, are you going to support anything, no matter what it is? Are you going to?
Am I going to support anything? Yeah, I'm going to support something. Are you suggesting I'm not?
Okay, let's-
You know, I'm just-
Let's steer the conversation on the sewer side over to Richard. So I understand there's three per bedroom, per septic, et cetera, et cetera. Now we do have some homes, and we, of course, businesses, I think all the businesses are on sewer. What's the recommendation, if it's in 1800 or it's a 300?
Did you hit the wrong way? Yeah, I don't, I don't see putting any limits on it, based on, yeah, the use of the sewer system. I mean, it can handle whatever you put it in, as long as the pipe is bringing up coming out of the building.
Yeah, since this is an ordinance that is being derived in order to protect our neighborhoods.
Right, right.
If we can, you know, put boundaries around it so that it is addressing what happens in our R1 zones, and maybe any other residential- It would be very easy to exempt this whole mechanism from C zones, if that's what you want to have.
Well, I think that makes sense. We're not, we're only trying to solve for how do we protect our neighborhoods, not how do we protect-
Or that would only apply to R zones. I mean, that may be exempted.
Not how do we protect Casey's from their next-door neighbor or-
Well, there are cities, I mean, I mean, you probably know, I assume other people have read a lot of other ordinances, but Fayetteville?
Oh my gosh, I don't even know how many different designations they have, different types of dwelling units, if you will.
Okay, I think Doug's got something there.
I have to confirm this with our chief building official, but the Fire Code does put a cap on occupancies, it's based on square footage, so-
It's one per 200 square feet?
Per 200 square feet, so if you've got a 1600 square foot house and you're on sewer, eight would be the max.
Well, sewer, oh yeah, sewer or septic.
Yeah.
That's just a flat occupancy Fire Code limit.
Yeah, you've got 1600 square feet, and you've put more than eight people in there, it becomes a fire nizer.
It's not uncommon at all, regardless of whether it's short-term rental, long-term rental, or a homeowner occupied, to have an occupancy cap in a residential zone of a certain amount. That's, we don't have that, but it is very typical that cities would have these large extended families that would all be living in a home. This was a problem probably more than a dozen years ago, in certain cities in northwest Arkansas, you'd have, basically it was a situation of extended family, parents, three or four kids, grandparents, and uncle, and an aunt, all staying in the same home, and they owned the home, so, and they were there all the time. So it wasn't, you know, occupancy issues can come up outside of this whole short-term rental discussion, and that may be worthy of discussion separately as well, but that does factor. That's the legacy issue.
Councilman Powell asked me if I'm going to support anything here.
Sure.
I think we've taken this thing, we've created a problem where they maybe, we've created an additional problem where there weren't really a problem. We've got, we've got issues that need to be dealt with, but we've, we're going, it seems like we're going overboard, we're going over-regulated. You know, we're creating, we're creating another regulation to deal with regulations that we already have.
Well, we don't have an occupancy regulation.
No, we don't have an occupancy regulation, but again, how are you going to enforce the occupancy regulation?
Commercial buildings have occupancy loads as well. This room, I think, is 99. The bike shop and the boutique hotel will have an occupancy limit on that building. Now, how the fire marshal goes about enforcing that, I have to get with him and ask him, but if you've got a room in that bike shop that's, they've got 100 people in there, and the max is 50, I think he could show up and rouse citation also.
And like in any other restaurant or whatever, there should be a, what would be a plaque on the outside that says, "The maximum occupancy of this particular dwelling is however many." But still, yeah, the question is, how are you going to enforce that? I disagree today, I'll disagree tomorrow, and I'll disagree from now on. It is not the police department's duty or job to go knocking on doors and counting people in a house.
Well, who would go count people in a restaurant after overbooked?
The fire department.
Well, what's that difference between the fire department and police department as far as enforcement goes?
There's a lot of difference, and there's a lot of difference in the enforcement. I mean-
Oh, really?
Well, the fire, does fire inspector have the arrest powers?
Yeah.
I don't know.
He does.
How do you know that?
I know he has citation, I don't know if it's about arrest.
Well, you're not going to arrest anybody, now you can give them a ticket to go from there, you're not taking them to jail or anything.
We've already got police and code enforcement, I really have resisted any effort to try to make fire officials, people that cite in court as well. There definitely needs to be a discussion about whether it's code enforcement-centric or police-centric on how, but let me just remind the council, you all are the legislators, you determine what ought to be legal and illegal, and the mayor and the executive determine how to enforce it. And obviously, if it's not able to be enforced, that's something you all want to avoid, and I understand that's the discussion, but a lot of the granular detail is definitely something that would eventually be up to an officer on the street, or to the mayor's instruction to that officer on how they're supposed to handle the situation.
Doug, do you want to change that?
No, I was just thinking, I don't want to get hung up on this and just stuck on this and talk about it around in circles for, you know, an hour, two hours. We need to move forward with some of the other points. It's understood that Councilman Snow has an issue with this, I understand that, it's fine, but we can't keep going around in circles forever.
Well, what we need to do is take whatever we've got today, put it in the next draft form, and then when it comes up, be on it again.
Right, so, point we'll take it. Alright, septic inspection, I think we're headed there. Well, John, I think, you know, John brought up a valid point, you know, if you have the bike shop, and if that's a C1 zone, no residential housing around it or anything, I don't know who it's really going to bother, right? So I think that's, that's something worth thinking about. Now, whenever you talk about R2 zoning, which is the development, you know, the Cooper development that they have there multiple, that is R2, and it still is encompassed by residential zoning about three, on three sides of it. So, and I don't even know, I haven't even seen how they're marketed, I'm not really sure, but I don't think that they would be marketed to many more than what they want the capacity to be. I'd have to look at that, I don't know. The Greens, should that be considered different? Is that part of the townhouse authority?
They used to be timeshares, I think, at one point, I think.
Yeah, they started out as a timeshare nationwide.
I think they're owned by two different people now.
And they're still part of that nationwide thing, but you can also rent by the night.
So we're, I don't, here's what I think, I don't think we're going to figure those things out today. I think there were good considerations, do a little research, a little background, put a little thought into it, and see where we can land on that. Because we've got a lot of time, right, till even our next, like, city council meeting work session even.
Yep.
So I like, not table it, I'm not saying officially table it, but-
Needs more work.
I'm glad you brought it up.
Yeah.
Okay, so the septic permit, Richard mentioned the other day, you know, having, short-term rentals, you know, require having pumped every four to five years. I think that was the neighborhood of what you were talking, what you mentioned.
Actually, what he said was, a homeowner should pump it every five to seven years. Then he suggested maybe the short-term rentals should pump it every year, and my reaction to that is it was too often.
Yeah, it may be, every year may be too often, for sure, but that's why I like the inspection idea, you know, is having it inspected more often, inspected initially, and then inspected, even if you did it every two years, and have it checked. And then if the inspection was done, if it was part of the inspection, to check the tank, to check the sludge level and the scum level in the tank, you could determine whether or not the tank needed to be pumped. So you wouldn't just automatically pump it, but you could at least inspect it, say if it needed it. Some of them might not, some of them might need it more frequently.
I like this idea too, and Richard has been working on kind of a checklist for what that inspection should include. And it seems to me, if somebody has their septic inspected, that would eliminate some of this occupancy side stuff. It is, they've got a healthy, functioning septic system, we're not worried about that. Whatever they're doing, the frequency of their guests, the number of their guests, they're managing it well, and it's passing that inspection, does that let us off the hook on some of these occupancy limits?
No, because you're still going to Fire Code.
Well, to the Fire Code, that's a hard stretch of rule, I think. That already exists, that's not us creating a new law.
Can I add one more thing? You know, these water usages are estimates, because we don't really know. I mean, you know, eight people in one house may use twice as much water as eight people in another house, it just kind of depends on the people and what they're doing. So that's why I think the inspection is really good, that's going to catch the ones that are actually having issues, and then the ones that are doing fine are going to be, you know, great, you're not going to have any problems. Because we don't, we don't really know, we're saying these are estimated water usages, some of them are going to be higher, some of them are going to be lower. And the only way to catch the ones that are on the outliers is to do those inspections periodically.
No, I don't think so, I've asked that question, ask Richard, he's got the answer.
So, we are septic inspectors, so you'd have to go to an outside third party?
Or, yeah, I mean, it's potential that if you, the people that already work here, if they're doing the other inspections, they could get a license, one of the licenses from the health department, you know, that would qualify them to do that. It's difficult to get a designer's license, a designated representative license, that you have to have a degree, you have to have some of your experience, or you have to be an engineer, plumber, you know, you may have some of those qualifications, folks with those.
Similar to paper?
Yeah. Or, and she worked for the health department for years, so she became a registered sanitary, and that qualified her, but you can get an installer's license, you know, if we're going to license those folks who do the inspections, or allow them to do it.
I remember you mentioned that before.
You know, there's also another license, that's a certified maintenance provider, that's another license you could get from the health department. I think you have to have a Class 1 wastewater license for that. But there are different, you know, you could go and get a certification from the health department, members of your staff, whoever, you know, could get that, and that would basically qualify them to do the inspections.
I think that kind of brings us to the point of determining whether these occupancy maximums that we have are us trying to manage a concern over septic, or is it us trying to protect the neighborhoods from having large groups come in on a regular basis? You know, it's kind of, we had a straddle going there, we were going to, we were going to accomplish both of those objectives with occupancy limits. We don't address, if we allow somebody to say, "I've got a pretty big house here, and I market it to 14 people." If we allow them to say, "Well, as long as you bring us an inspection report that shows your septic is healthy, you're good to go." We don't handle that other side, which is protecting our neighborhoods from feeling like there's a big group every week, whatever the case may be, next door to me. So I think, I like the idea of the inspection, because I think it takes this management of occupancies, you know, police knocking on doors, or whatever the case may be, I think it takes that out of play. But we might still have to factor in, how do we address the people in the neighborhood who say, "It's not the septic, really, the septic seems to be fine, it's the fact that I've got this big group coming in every weekend."
Finally, dealing with the big groups, why don't we, if we identify, when you identify the short-term rental, why don't we get an ordinance preventing parking, put up signs, no parking signs, no parking in the street signs, in that particular areas?
We have ordinances for parking. And during the day, it shouldn't make any difference, as long as you're not messing up a driveway, a mailbox, or a fire hydrant.
You can't park both sides.
But we have parking ordinances.
Right.
We already have that.
Signs, I mean, designating certain areas, there's no-
Well, then you're going to have signs everywhere.
I'm sorry, Jason, you can't, it's already ordinance, you can't park overnight on the street.
Right.
That's existed.
There's properties that have plenty of parking, that's, that's not the problem.
Well, we got-
And we have plenty who don't have enough, and end up parking illegally. We have ordinances against that today, so that's taken care of.
Well, some of our parking ordinances were developed some time ago, when we had 15,000 people too, and we got narrow streets now with it.
We need to get any narrower, they're just narrow.
Do one, man.
You're worried about parking on this, if the city doesn't have it covered, the state does.
I'd like to go back to protecting the community.
Yeah, but on the parking, I mean, we got narrow streets, whether they got narrow or always been there. We got narrow streets that are more parking on those narrow streets now than it was five years ago, two years ago, 10 years ago. There are more parking on the streets.
I haven't seen it on my street.
I've seen it on, I've seen it on several streets on the east side.
Garage sales. Garage sale Saturday.
I don't know if they have a garage sale at midnight, or they got the need to. That's good for them.
Well, if they're doing it midday, then they're violating a state and a city court.
I would say that the draft that Mr. Fatt, I think most of that is in fact, the place where parking is addressed in this short-term rental proposal is that we would require short-term rentals to have a minimum of two off-street parking spaces available on-site, so they can't rely on street parking. That may be two cars in the driveway.
Two in the garage?
Obviously, you can have vehicles in the garage and the driveway, but they would have to be on-site, not on the street. And that's what's in this current, I think all three drafts of the short-term rental have that provision.
Okay, so, let's go back to protecting the neighborhood.
Right.
The people.
Yeah.
It sounds as if we can, on the septic side, we might be able to control that, because we've got a fire code and we've got an expert as well. Three per room or 200 square feet per person. What do we do with the sewer?
Well, I thought we had that equation as well. We were, it was going to be, now it would be, I guess, three per bedroom plus two. Three per bedroom plus two.
Regardless of whether it's sewer or septic.
Yes. I mean, you take a hotel. You get a king bed, you get two queens. It's two or four people. You want another person in there, then you have to order like a roll-in bed. They may like to do that, but they're going to charge it for it. But I'm just saying hotels have limits on occupancy per room. They just do. This is no different.
The difference between septic and sewer is the sewer has a bumper of plus two on the end of it. The septic doesn't have that. It was just three per bedroom.
Well, we're kind of allowing, we kind of came up with a way, if you will, to kind of allow, you know, instead of two.
Okay, so everybody can have three per bedroom plus two?
No, no.
Oh, okay.
Not on septic.
That's what I was just saying.
Yeah, what you said was right.
Okay, I'm sorry. I went over my head.
That's right. Three per bedroom on septic, and then on sewer, three per bedroom plus two.
Yes.
Well, that doesn't work out, though. Take a two-bedroom house, one on sewer, one on septic. One on sewer has three people per bedroom or six in the house.
Right.
Plus...
Plus two.
Six in the house plus two, so that's eight in the septic system?
Not in septic. It's just three times two, six.
So, is the sewer counted as two per bedroom or three?
Three plus two.
So, it would be six, eight.
Six on septic, eight on sewer.
Okay.
Mayor, back to your point of, back to your point, back to Steve's point of protecting the neighborhood. What points have we got to hit to protect the neighborhood, to protect the neighbors?
Well, that's a, I think he impliedly brought up a question. Is there a max number? You know, three per bedroom, if you have a five-bedroom house, that's 15 people.
If you do, more than likely, it's going to be on a larger property.
Yeah.
You're not going to have very many of those.
I don't know if we have many five-bedroom septic systems in the city. We have any. We may have...
We have one?
I think we have one.
But if you're on sewer...
Is it a short-term rental, Taylor?
It is, yeah.
So, if you're on sewer, you could go, what, 17 then?
So, five times three is...
This one's septic, I think. Five-bedroom on septic.
Yeah.
If you have a five-bedroom home.
And I suspect...
I'm just saying, if you're the person next door.
As I was listening to some of the feedback we're getting, I get this impression that there may be one big property on Locklawn that's really causing heartburn. Am I the only one? Is that...
Well, that one is, but there are many others.
There are.
There's some truth to that, yeah.
Oh, and Windsor, Lake Anne Brittany. I mean, there's not any lake I haven't heard from yet.
Just so many, so many of the people I heard from were, "Yeah, well, I live right next door to them," or "I live right across the cove from them." Sounded like there was a crew of people addressing one property.
Well, I wrote down the lakes. It was Lynn, it was Brittany, Locklawn, and Windsor last night.
I could give you examples from all that might not have been there last night. Another thing that was brought up, you know, is it was in the proposal that Larry was writing, and that is, you know, limiting, you know, a number of STRs on a street, right, or on a cul-de-sac or whatever. But, I mean, I even actually had an STR owner, you know, mention, and everybody got the email. I don't know how many have read all the emails, because there's many of them, but eliminating sandwiching, right? There's a cul-de-sac, and you know, it's like, "Well, it's only one cul-de-sac." Well, if you're the guy that lives on that cul-de-sac, right, there are three homes, side by side by side on a cul-de-sac, you know. Mr. Jones, he's just miserable.
He calls, he's got short-term rentals.
Yes. So, I, I mean, I got, I could show you like a list of streets that have three, have two.
Three properties or three short-term rentals?
Three STRs, short-term rentals on a street. Now, the street might be 40 houses long. You might have one on one and one on the other. I haven't tried to dissect that one yet. But, you know, the sandwiching, you know, where you've got like one on each side.
So, that brings us to the realm of caps.
Yeah.
Not only caps for the city, but do we take it down caps per street?
Per street.
One has to do with the density or the frequency of the STR in the neighborhood or along a street.
Correct.
Which is a little bit different than the cap, because it deals with density, not total number in your community.
True.
So...
Or you could do a cap per lake.
You, I mean, we talked about that, right? So, now you get into the realm of determining what's a lake property and what isn't, or what is a golf course property and what isn't, you know? That becomes a whole nother level of, you know...
One of the issues is that I think any one of us, we assume as a single-family property owner in the city, we can have birthday gatherings with all the in-laws and outlaws that we invite over, the neighbors and friends. And so, there's no limitation about doing that. And so, I think a resounding resistance by the property, by the STR folks is that they feel they should be allowed to have gatherings like that at their facilities too. And frankly, I have to agree with them, but they can't stay there overnight if they exceed the capacity allowance. But, you know, can they have a birthday gathering, a wedding reception?
And how do you enforce it?
And as long, well, the enforcement is noise, parking, those kinds of things. You know, you can have 40 people there, some of them in the yard, some of them in the house, but you can't have 20 cars out front.
I will tell you that that's going to be a big fat no from residents that live around the homes. They're not going to support that. And I think a lot of short-term rental owners, I don't know that they support that either. It just doesn't make any sense. These aren't, these are short-term rentals. They're for weekend stays, you know, to come with your family and things like that. They're not, they're not party houses. You know, if you want to have a party, you know, there are a lot of other facilities around that are built to have, you know, accommodate situations like that. So...
That's a tough one to enforce too, though, isn't it? I mean, what constitutes a party? Is it the first can of beer that gets opened up, or is it the first birthday cake, or is it the balloon?
It comes down, back down, like you said, Steve, to marketing, you know?
Yeah, how do you market it? Yeah, again.
You can't market it like that.
I'm game.
And like in this, in this...
Evolve.
On, but whatever I read, it's right in the contract. There are no, there's no additional capacity allowed over what the property is marketed to essentially, period.
Jason?
Sir?
I rent a 3,000-square-foot house for the next 12 months, and I advertise, then I advertise that 3,000-square-foot house as for parties, receptions, weddings, whatever you want to.
You're going to have a zoning problem if you do that. I mean, if you're running a party facility, it's only, I mean, Tyler expressed that, but we do have some uses in the code. If it was only used for, as a wedding venue, then I think they would be violating the conditions of R1 zone, assuming they're in R1, and they couldn't operate. They couldn't do it. They'd be violating the zoning ordinance, and we could shut that down. If it was exclusively for that, someone lived there and they had their friends over, or they were leasing it for overnight accommodation, but they were going to have a wedding ceremony in the living room, that's not going to be an issue. According to this draft, if you can exclusively market a short-term rental for parties or weddings, the language in there listed receptions, and other wedding-related parties, corporate meetings, or similar activities, only for overnight accommodation.
And I will tell you, we're both, we can do whatever we want, you know, we're writing the ordinances between us. That is standard. I don't care what city.
No parties in short-term rentals?
Yep. Right. I mean, again, I go back to, these are single-family residential homes and neighborhoods. They're not designed to have, now, you know, if I've got, you know, my neighbor Joe, and she wants to have a birthday party, have people, you know Joe, right?
Right.
You know Joe. And you know, these are friends coming over, they're going to play cards, or they're going to do whatever. They're going to be there for two or three hours, and then everybody's going to leave and go home. Well, nobody has a problem with that.
Maybe they would.
You know, yeah.
Have a piece of cake or whatever.
That's different. You know your neighbors, you know. You know what they're doing. You know what you're doing.
I totally, I totally get that. I'm okay with that wording. If that wording works in other communities, that's fine by me. But I have heard from a short-term rental operator in Bella Vista who said, "You know what? I just, I rent a room, but I have a beautiful backyard, and I've had on occasion a couple that wants to get married back there." And, you know, I don't think anybody gives a darn. It seems like it's probably okay. It's not that there are going to be 40 people there, but that's kind of how we get into this ciphering, you know, what's allowed and what's not allowed. If we say weddings are not allowed, I can't marry the two.
It is a law. If you're going to do that, now you said if it's the owner of the home and it's their room and they want to do that, okay. And you know what? Maybe even a short-term rental owner that has a house and says, "Hey, I have a couple," but you kind of say, "Hey, neighbors, this is going to take place this afternoon. They're just going to be here for a couple hours and let them know." Well, I'm not, I don't even know. Okay, this is on the side. You don't have to tell everybody everything.
Don't tell anybody, yeah. But just get them married and get them on the road.
Yeah. I think the key is that you can't market it for that purpose.
Yeah.
I think that can't market it.
Fair enough.
I don't think you should prohibit it from being occurring there, like you would in the neighborhood with all single-family houses.
Mr. Kell, I just want to remind everyone that this is beyond our regulatory power, and that's what we're here to talk about. The people are not helpless in these circumstances, even if we don't adopt an ordinance. If their neighbors are creating a nuisance, be it by short-term rentals, or parties, or noise, or whatever, they're rendering their neighbor's life intolerable in that house, they can sue them all day long. And those people are liable for nuisance, and they can be enjoined and stopped. That, that, that's just basic law. That's equitable, equitable principles of law. They can go do that. So, it's not all up to us or they have no remedy. I want to make sure, now, that costs money, and it's attorneys, and it's time, and it's, and that's not an excuse for us not to step in and do what we need to do. But I want you to know, they're not helpless.
Okay. So, you bring me back to like, I think a couple things. If we just talk about, we could probably walk away today, and we've got enough that we could massage this ordinance back to kind of like the consensus of what we heard.
We don't have a cap.
That's what I was getting ready to say. There are like two things. The permit fee, do we set a number, or do we do it based upon occupancy to make it proportional? What do you think? Right? So, like I mentioned, five people, and we're going to have to get back to John's point. We will take homes with a room or a space. They, I think they break that out in the Granicus. I think they identify those homes. It is, it isn't very many. It's a very small number. But if we take out the bicycle shop with the places of above, if we take out the greens, for instance, for whatever reason, if we can, I've got to look at what the, I mean, when I say I have to, I'm not going to be determining factor. I just want to know how it's zoned. I don't know, right? It kind of stands alone if that's a different type of situation.
Yeah, I don't know either.
Right. So, we'll have to look at those things. Maybe those numbers come out of the cap. So, but what I'm going back to is 500, let's just say an average of five, an average of five occupancy. I don't know what it is. That's a low number, probably. You're talking 125 grand at 50 per head count. So, is that, is that too much? You know, two, I'd ask you to do this, go back and look at our permit fee schedule, and you can see what we charge for other permits. $50 a head count is not out of the realm versus what we charge for a lot of other things for permits, okay? So, and two, you know, Doug made a really great point when we were talking. If you're, you know, say $50 or $75, I think what we don't want to do is have the permanent residents of Bella Vista have to pay for the inspections that, you know, what it's going to cost, you know, these short-term rentals. The short-term rental owners should foot that bill, because they're the ones operating the business. Because that is what it is. It's a business.
But I would, I guess, take a little deference to that, and it's a fallacy of most governments, local, county, state, and federal, is that they have a revenue-generating program, and they ignore the revenue when they talk about the cost of, how do we manage it? So, I think some of the revenue that we're going to appreciate, and we have been appreciating, needs to offset some of the cost of this program. It's not 100% that the permits are free, because I think there's some additional things that we need to do that we wouldn't ordinarily have to do.
So, you're talking the sales tax?
I'm talking about the sales tax for revenue. That's, that's, that goes into our general coffers. So, it's a general revenue. It's a benefit to the city and all of the residents here. So, some of that, as most governments do when they look at, how's it going to, how are we going to manage this program and the cost it's going to cost us, they ignore the revenue side that is being generated. And so, I'm saying is that we shouldn't base the fee on what it's going to cost us to manage this.
You don't, you don't really have to break even on the fee, because the real action's in the sales tax.
My proposal was 125 the first time, and then 75 for any renewals.
I hear that. And also, I thought, we were also talking about making some adjustments in the frequency of the health and safety inspection. That might soften kind of the cost side, the staffing side. You're, I heard clerk and I heard inspector. Was it one of each we were trying to fund?
Yes, because the clerk would be a new hire.
Okay. So, I think, I think that's one of the arcs that we've seen in regard to our conversation around these proposed ordinances, is we started off thinking that there doesn't need to be any new staff. We've come to understand, as we've thought about it, and this is, this is normal during the course of consideration and figuring things out, we've come to understand that we think we need a clerk and an inspector if we're going to do this stuff on an annual basis. But if we could push out some of the health and safety inspections, in fact, I want to go back one more time and just kind of make sure everybody thinks that's a necessity. But if we did soften it and just said, "We're not going to do 500 in the first 90 days. We're going to do 500 over the next three years." We will draw out a lot and say, "The first third of the permits are going to require inspection this year, the next third next year, the next third the year after that." That way, we spread it out. We don't have this intense need for 500 health and safety inspections upfront.
No, I got a problem with that.
Okay, hold on, hold that just for a second. Now, I'll make my final point with health and safety inspections. Are we sure we haven't created something there, a solution for a problem that doesn't exist? Of all of the feedback that we've gotten from residents, I don't think I've heard anybody say, "You know, I'm really concerned that they don't have a handrail next door." I don't know that that, you know, I don't know that that needs to be there. I'm willing to compromise if we can spread them out. We don't just go, you know, gangbusters after 500 inspections.
So...
But if, are we sure that health and safety inspections are, we're being asked to address that?
I think that might be part of the fire code. I'm not sure, but there's some things about occupancy and rental spaces in the fire code. But the thought is, is that the approach that I took on that is that allow the homeowner to do that. Turn in the inspection report. They got the checklist. It's either passes or it fails. If it fails, then they fix it. Turn in a second report that says, "I pass," and then we can process their application. But within the first year or the first period that it's, that it's open, whether we have a two-year permit, a one-year permit, during that first one or two years of the permit period, then CDS does a follow-up inspection.
Could be anytime.
Anytime during that period, but it has to be done before the renewal.
So, they do a self-inspection first?
They do a self-inspection first.
Are you comfortable putting your name on the license and issuing a business license to a home? Most of the complaints we heard were noise on the deck without anybody from their staff. their staff ever putting their eyes on that deck.
So, the deck collapses?
Well, but that's part of that inspection checklist, the owner says when it's got a.
But I'm hearing that some of those won't get inspected until after the first year.
Well, but the owner is certifying that it's there, or they're having someone do it for them.
Oh, I didn't hear that.
The owner could have their agent do it, as an example, if they have someone managing the property, they might be doing it to turn it in. Somebody's gotta turn in the paperwork.
Are we gonna inspect the decks of every home? So, I mean, you know, somebody has a party at their house, and the deck falls down, I mean, what's it worth?
We're not issuing a license, a business license to owner-occupied, single-family residents, family. We're issuing a business license to, we're issuing a short-term rental permit.
So, are we having one inspection or ongoing?
No, it's, well, it's initial inspection. The ongoing would be on the septic systems. So, what I heard was like, every year would be two. I don't disagree with that. Every other year, potentially, every third, but at minimum, you need to put your eyes on that home one time, at minimum, to look at the deck, make sure those smoke alarms are there, the, the, the fire extinguishers, you know, just get your eyes on the electric to make sure that there had something, something going on goofy with the wiring. But to your point, yes, I have heard from a lot of people that they're concerned with some of these homes, because if you've been living for 30 years, and they've never been touched, nothing's ever been done to them, and, and plus the townhomes.
Yeah.
The townhomes are like a, a huge issue with people.
Well, the irony of this all, I mean, I'm fine, I guess, with having one inspection, but long-term rentals are a way bigger inspection problem than short-term rentals. Because of the reviews, the market's regulating short-term rentals, it's falling apart. You're not gonna get the reviews, you're not gonna get cost. Long-term rentals are a disaster waiting to happen. You're gonna have just a piece of junk and just be a cheap old landlord and just leave it that way.
We initially had a conversation when I was very first electing about a property maintenance ordinance, right, that I spent, oh my God, I spent so much time on that, went up to New Hope, Minnesota, spoke to all their personnel, and, but it didn't just have to do with short-term or just long-term, it was your permanent housing stock. Every time a home was vacated, and, well, I should say this, a transaction took place, even if it was just, you know, between this owner to a new owner, that home gets inspected every single time, regardless of what, property type, rental, not rental, whatever it is.
Standard in some states.
Yeah, yeah. And they have a whole program in Minnesota that supports it. But I, I hear you on the, the long-term rentals, but I, right now, that's not what we're talking about or dealing with.
Yeah, I agree.
That's not what we're getting, you know, all of the feedback on, and I'm supportive of doing something with long-term rentals, because I agree with you. That's one of the things that quite frankly spurred me on to run, I was looking around Bella Vista going, oh my gosh, we've got a huge housing issue with some of our housing in Bella Vista. But that's a whole, whole different thing to try to.
So, do we have consensus that initially, there has to be a home inspection? For the permitting process?
I know. My, my part of that, I mean, Doug was looking like he was giving them up to a year to get it. My position would be, we pick a date, we're gonna start this. Everybody throws their information in, and then we start worrying about inspections. But we only give them 90, 120 days, six months to get it done. If you don't have it done in six months, you've lost your initial fee, and you go back to the other end of the line. If you can't get it in six months, you shouldn't have to worry about it. If you get it in six months, you're all set to go. But we can't let it run, and let these people home free for a year or two. Put a cap or a date on when you have to have it done by. Six months ought to be plenty, especially then we're getting into the fall and winter season, when it shouldn't be a problem to get inspectors and stuff, and you'll have more time, because the rental numbers are gonna be down, except for Thanksgiving, Christmas, and a couple other times. But put a cap on how long you have to comply. And then if you don't comply, you literally come off the list and go back to square one and start over.
But the bottleneck is not.
If you comply, then you're effective, well, from when you paid your permit in the first place.
Right. The bottleneck, though, is not on the part of the short-term rental operator. The bottleneck is on the part of the city being able to administer those inspections.
Right.
Would it be possible, Doug, for us to hire somebody on a temporary basis, so that it's not, we're, we're only gonna need this person as long as it takes to get these inspections done, and then, and then we're not gonna keep doing it every year.
Why can't those licensed home inspectors that you mentioned, why can't they do it?
I think they're inundated right now with.
Sales.
Real estate inspections, as it is.
Thank you, thank you.
There are inspectors, and we have one on staff that does contract inspections. But hiring a temporary inspector could be a challenge. I think where we need a staff person would be for the application processing, permit issuing, inspection scheduling, but, you know, we have.
More the in-office function.
We have three code officers.
High records to keep track of.
And four billing inspectors that can assist with these.
They, they have the bandwidth to do 500 inspections in 90 days?
Well, I mean, the initial could be a challenge, but I'm saying, once that levels out, processing them down the road, we could, we could do those.
I think initially, you may wanna go 120 days.
Yeah, well, give them, give them enough time. We're the bottleneck, not the short-term rental.
I think, I think deservedly, we don't want all of the permits to come due on the same date. One of the suggestions that came to us, is we have them due on March 1st or April 1st. I think the reality is, you want those scheduled scattered throughout the year, and maybe, maybe you draw a ticket out of a hat every time you process one, and say, okay, what's the, what's the expiration date gonna be here? It's gonna be one to five months added, and so.
It's too complex.
Put that idea.
Hundred, get their permit good for 15 months or 18 months. That way, they're not back in there until they're back in there.
Once again, this is something, like, especially Fayetteville, we know, they had, they had to make adjustments as they got into this, they moved down the road, because they didn't know really what they were gonna be facing. So, once again, if we, if we need to, we have the ability to make some adjustments as we move forward.
If you set a date, and you realize that people are not gonna be able to comply, you can pass another ordinance and extend it. You could, you know.
It's not unusual.
That's, that's entirely understandable and reasonable, and, you know.
Did we ever get the price hammered up?
I think, I think 50, if it's, if it's a six-person occupancy, then at 50 bucks a person, that's 300 bucks. I think that's, I think that's excessive.
Unless you made it for two years. Well, I think the renewal on a yearly basis, after you do the first one, I think it's gonna be fairly rubber-stamping, is it not?
Well, you.
What are you going to require?
You need to do a permitting. If you put a cap, if you put a cap, you have to do the permitting every year, because you have to know what your number is.
Right.
I think the permit could be, fee could be adjusted up to the first year. If too much is coming in to pay for staff, then you can certainly adjust it, but you've gotta determine whether you want the whole city paying for the program, or the short-term rental owners.
Well, I'm thinking that the program should.
You ultimately gotta approve the budget. I mean, if it doesn't pay for itself, then my CDS budget goes up, and you can either.
In that regard, aren't there general fund monies that are allocated to CDS, though?
Sure, sure. But this is a special program, I think should fund itself.
Well, and, and the argument is, if they're generating revenue to the city, some of that money should be diverted into that fund.
And that's what you mentioned before, sure.
Yeah, I think that's the fairness of it all.
But it's trying to figure out what that is.
So, so if you have.
But it's probably mathematically, we should be able to calculate.
So, if you take a two-bedroom, two-bedroom house, we're saying that the capacity of a two-bedroom house is, is three per bedroom, that's six plus two spares, that's eight people. So, what's the cap gonna be for, for the eight people? So, if you take $25, that would be 200 bucks.
I, I.
$10 would be.
Personally, I prefer to have a flat fee and not be changing the fee depending how many people. You're just making things complicated.
Yeah, just a flat fee.
Yeah, it's just under $100.
And Jason, in, in the permitting part of the ordinance, we wrote, as needs to be set, or can be set.
It sets an initial permit fee.
That's automatic in there.
Hold on, what's it say?
It sets an initial permit fee, or such other amount as may be set from time to time by resolution of the council.
So, we set it.
So, you, of course, you can reduce it, increase it by resolution, and any time you get ready.
So, it's solvable. It'll just take some work.
Can I, what, what is the going rate per night on an Airbnb in Bella Vista? Does anybody know?
Depends on the occupancy. If it's four occupancy, it's probably 100 to 150. If it's 10 occupancy, it's five, six, seven hundred bucks.
Per night?
Granicus gave us around 150.
Well, here, let's, let's.
What'd you say this?
It's 160.
For 10 people?
What's that? Average.
Oh, average.
Yeah, average across all rentals is 160.
Okay. She just seemed to know, so.
Is it per night?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, correct.
See, we just asked her a question. Do you have an Airbnb, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Okay. Just on an average, say for the year, how many days do you think you are occupied?
We, for Bella Vista, for the entire city, we average about 16% occupancy.
60?
Yep.
All year?
60 to 65, all year long.
Okay. Out of 365 days?
Correct.
Great, out of a year. But they're not full all the time.
Right.
That's my point.
So, anyway.
Do you find that true of the larger houses as well?
Um, so there is a season for all size houses. So, your smaller houses are gonna do better at different times versus your larger houses, but that, the stats I just gave you is just a real rough estimate of everybody's. The same information that he speaks about, about Granicus, is available to all of us. It's just software data. This is something that I provide to a lot of investors all the time, so I know these numbers really, really well. But they, they definitely go up and down. So, in the summertime, for your bigger houses, you're gonna see a lot of, you know, you're gonna have more occupancy, you're gonna have bigger crowds, and that's gonna dwindle in the winter, and so it's just gonna go up and down. And then, of course, market changes and stuff like that will affect it as well.
Quality of the, of the accommodation affects the.
Absolutely.
I like the idea of a cycle of two years, and that is, just so that we stay out of this, but it's time to go back, it's time, years pass pretty quick nowadays. If we could do it for two years, at $75 a year, that's $150 upfront. I like the idea of saying, your health and safety inspection will be due before your renewal. We have two years. The city has two years, the short-term rental operators have two years to get their first inspection. You will not get a renewal without a health and safety inspection. Two years, $150. To me, that makes sense. It keeps us all out of a grind, of an annual grind, of renewing these permits and whatever may come.
Unless you take care of your big, all of a sudden, everybody hitting you. You get that much time.
Why can't, why can't the, the homeowner, or the property owner, why can't they get their own inspection? I mean, if it's, as long as it's done by a licensed inspector? I mean, they got so much time, and.
I brought that up a while ago. Not everybody liked the idea, but if we create the checklist and say, this is what has to be inspected, then any home inspector, it seems to me, can take that up and be available to, to a short-term rental operator to say, I'm available to do your inspection.
Well, as I said, the short-term rental operator can, can find that person. They can, can go out and source that person to do their.
Yeah, and that person's reputation, professional reputation is on the line, just like it is when they get hired to do a health inspection.
Probably 150 bucks. I wouldn't go do one for less than 150 bucks.
That would be then between the, the property owner and the inspector.
That gets the city out of the, out of the need to hire somebody, and try to work with the peaks and valleys of inspection demand. So, do these, would these guys, or people, wherever they are, have to register with the city and be approved?
I mean, you'd probably want us to verify that they're registered with the State Home Inspection Board, if that's who you want to do it with.
Yeah. Is that a requirement of all people who are doing home inspections in Bella Vista today? It'd be no different then, I don't think. I don't know if you guys check those people?
No, that's a private transaction. We don't check those.
Okay, I see.
That's not required.
Isn't this a private transaction?
Licensee transaction.
I think that's the purpose, that's the purpose of us turning it over to the private side, so that it is a private agreement between a short-term rental operator and a home inspector.
Well, you want somebody that's qualified, though, licensed, qualified to do it?
A licensed home inspector.
And what Doug is talking about is that they would validate the current licensing of that individual.
They don't do that today for home inspections in Bella Vista.
Because it's not an issue. It's a private issue.
This is private also. It's, it's the operator.
City, city has no control over those inspections for home, home sales, which is where you have the home inspection.
If you have a permit, you're turning it in.
This is, this is different than that.
We have a checklist, you think, that comes from the government, therefore.
Well, we have a checklist that needs to be turned in, and we would have our people sign it, they're certified.
All right. I like the idea, but it may not.
I mean, well, I think, I think if they're.
Private, private sector can generally do it.
Yeah.
As effective or as efficient as, as the government, right?
I would agree with you.
Subscribe to that.
We will still need a clerk over there to oversee.
Uh, what do you guys think of a two-year permitting process, every two years versus one? The only, they said, the only thing that it could cause issues, we gotta, now we gotta talk about the cap, that's kinda like the last thing, right? So, where are we on a cap? If you have a cap, you're gonna have to have the ability to keep count of what's out there.
Yeah, no matter what, no matter how long.
And people that drop off with, you know, in that, or two, could be, within two years, could be availability, if you're at your cap, but they're not gonna be able to apply for a permit, because.
Until that permit expires, right?
Right.
Whether it's operating or not.
In two years.
Yeah, the cap, yeah, the cap is on the permit.
Because you could have, you could have 50 short-term rentals drop off, but we wouldn't know it.
Here's the question, Doug. If you have a cap, and you sell your STR, are you off, does that drop off then?
Yes.
You're off the list.
Yep.
So, it doesn't go with the.
Does not.
Well, it doesn't mean that whoever buys that house is gonna turn it in to an STR. They may buy it for a personal reason.
But the point is, if you're at the max, whoever buys the house may not be able to have an STR.
If somebody else offered eyes or whatever.
That's correct.
Well, but you got, if, if.
That's the only thing I ask, it affects values.
And that's written into the ordinance.
If a person turns their, if a person quits having an STR, then they turn in, they gotta be turned in to a permit.
Yeah, then they drop off, yeah.
Then you got one, there's one available then.
But there's no requirement to turn it in, or to tell them.
So, were you thinking there'd be a waiting list? I mean, if we did hit the cap?
I don't know. I don't know what it's gonna look like in the future.
Depends where you set your cap.
Yeah, I think if you set your cap at 500, there's gonna be, not only a waiting list, there's gonna be a rush for permits, for people who were considering doing it. Well, here's how I thought about the, about the cap, and I, I've thought about it a long time, and I, I don't like the idea necessarily of having to have a cap, but hearing from the residents, I think that's one of their concerns, is that, not where we are today, it's not like we're overrun today, we're not. The people we hear from, by and large, are people who live next door to one. That could be a problem, if you have a short-term operator who's not responsibly operating their property. But if I think, in the future, if I try to look down the road, what might being overrun look like? And to me, I was thinking of a cap in the neighborhood of 750. And the way I got that number is, we're told by the POA, we have 15,000 rooftops today. 15,000. Somebody said 13,000 last night, I think, the POA's number, they've got a pretty good cap, 15,000. That at 750 would never have, in Bella Vista, we would never have more than one in 20 homes as short-term rentals. Never. And that would allow the free market, we may never get there, there may never be 750. But that gives the free market time, a place to work. What does Bella Vista need? We don't have hotels. What's, what's the right number for Bella Vista? But to know on the high end, there will never be more than one in 20 homes operated in Bella Vista as a short-term rental. That's how I got to 750.
So, you got 5%?
5%. We're at, we're at 3.3% today. That gives us some room to grow. Doesn't cap it, I mean, if we're gonna cap it at 500, we're practically there now. And it, it seemed odd to me that, on the one hand, we've got the AMP over here driving demand for more short-term rentals, more guests to come to Bella Vista, and then, on the other hand, we're capping it right where we are.
We're not trying to drive more short-term rentals, okay, let's rephrase that.
Well, we're trying to drive demand for short-term rentals.
But we're not, we're not in the business of like, saying we need to build more short-term rentals.
No, I know that, but we are, that's their purpose, is to get people to come to Bella Vista.
To fill what we have now, you know, and to spend their money. It's restaurants, it's, you know, enjoying our short-term rentals.
Right.
Uh, enjoy our amenities, you know, it's a variety, it's a multitude of things.
But if we're going to cap it at five hundred, I think we're saying, you know what? We got there. Bella Vista has been discovered, and now the, the flow is coming, the guests are here. We've got what we want, and we don't want any more.
So Larry, his, I think he proposed four hundred.
Four percent.
Four percent.
That's six hundred of fifteen thousand, so.
And it's something that will climb, then, is the number of houses we have goes up too.
What if your grandfather?
So you're saying?
You can't do a hundred percent.
You're not saying six hundred.
And then, and the other thing was the density, in other words, how, how frequently can you have these? Can you have, uh, and so I prohibit it's, if you have six or fewer lots on the street, you can't have any. But then, as you go down a, a street that has more than six lots on it, you go for every, every ten, I said you can have two houses. Now, one of the proposals by, that was submitted last night, was two out of fourteen lots.
Yeah, Larry, before we get too granular in that, let's, let's try to cover the, the aggregate number, and then we'll dive into, is there a way?
The density part.
Yeah, yeah, the density.
And I, and I, four percent, I think, overall, long-term, is, is a number that's valid, I think, today.
That's one in twenty-five, right? As opposed to one in twenty. Six, uh, four percent or five percent is kind of where you and I are at.
Well, for every, for every five hundred homes, you'd be allowing twenty more. At, at our current build rate, like right now, I mean, that's a smaller number. It's easier to kind of get your arms around.
Taylor, isn't, didn't we like talk about kind of a percentage for cities that put a cap that is? And again, it's not to say we have to do the same thing, but just some guidelines.
What do you mean, like how you base the, what you base?
Well, don't, don't some cities have a percentage? They set a percentage of it.
Fayetteville is the only one, I think, that has a percentage, is three percent. Um, and they base it off the US Census housing data, housing unit data. Um, is what they base it off of, so it'll change in ten years. But for that ten years, until it changes again, they base their percentage off of that.
Okay.
So their number was what, three percent?
Three percent, Matt.
Wouldn't mean US housing data, that's a percent for the whole US?
Um, so the US Census, for Fayetteville specifically, they use their housing, uh, unit data from Fayetteville to get their cap.
I, I don't think at one in twenty houses, we've overrun or changed the dynamic of Bella Vista. I don't think that's excessive. I think it gives the free market room to work. I think it protects people who said, you know, I'm building a house right now, I'm not ready. I can't get a permit for it today, but I want that opportunity six months from now or nine months from now. I think it gives us room to grow, and I don't think it threatens Bella Vista to think that we might have one out of twenty homes in the future.
If you're on a lake, where do you think those short-term rentals, a lot of people are targeting?
Yeah, but the cap's not going to change that.
Yes. So what's happening is, you're talking about one twenty, it's not spread equally across Bella Vista.
That's where we have the density.
That's a fact.
Or trails would be another.
Yeah, right, I mean, like you said, I could support more, but just to say a blanket number, I mean, to, you know, all these additional ones, I know where they're going to go. Most, a lot of them, right? They're going to go to a lot of the cherry properties in Bella Vista, and they're going to take them off the market for long-term, uh, residents that would like to move here and live here.
And that's true.
I mean, that's just kind of the way, they're more valuable. I mean, it attracts more visitor, you know, more business.
Their prime choice in terms of rentals.
What, what is the economy doing to your bookings now? Anything? Are they up, down, even?
Oh, they're definitely down across the entire United States. And then they'll continue to go down.
So do we want to go down the density road as large?
I don't, I just, just personally, I just don't like that at all.
It'd be hard to manage.
Well, not only, but it's just, you know, it's, you're taking away the privilege. It's my house, I can do with it what I want. All of a sudden, no, you can't. No, you can't. And it's just too bad you have a nice house in a nice neighborhood, and circumstances come up, and I got to flip it to the other, and you can't do it because we got an ordinance. And I, I got a real problem with density. You know, if we're going to put a cap on it, that'll take care of itself, I think.
Where, where are you at on the cap, Jim? What, what feels?
I can go with, you know, I'd much rather stay at five, but I can go with six or seven fifty. I can go with, you know, I'm flexible on the cap. And the one thing, you know, we haven't talked about at all is progress. It's all part of growing up. All these little things that are popping up at us all the time, those are all parts of growing up that we need to adjust, and we need to remember that today ain't going to be like next week. You know, we need to think about that, but we're no longer the nice, quiet retirement village, you know. And nobody, a lot of people don't want to admit, but we are literally a bit, uh, you know, a better community. And it's just, that's what it is. There's no place to put anything, you know, hotel-wise, bring that in. So we're going to have these, but I, I got a real problem with density. As far as how many we have, you know, six hundred, seven fifty, that part doesn't bother me because like somebody said last night, the market will take care of itself if there's too many.
Jerry, where are you at on the cap?
Oh, I, I don't, I, I think the six hundred or six, seven fifty, I, I don't see a, a problem with that.
Do you feel like there ought to be a cap?
No, I think the market will take care of the cap. I mean, I think the market will take care of that, but, but.
Well, I want to turn into, what was the name of that place up in?
Man, so here's what I will tell you. You read in, uh, ordinance about all these different cities, and what's happened is, they didn't wake up soon enough. Okay? Steamboat Springs, Sedona, Arizona, even places like Seattle, Portland, Oregon. I could go on and on and on. And what's happened is, they moved in so fast, they happened so quickly. And I'll tell you right now, you got to think, you talk about the future and progress. You know, I'm a progressive guy. I mean, my wife and I, since we're fortunate, we're able to travel, we stay in short-term rentals a lot, right? What's that?
Democrat.
Progressive. I just don't go down that road, but don't blame me. So we, I mean, we utilize it, so we're kind of like pretty aware. And what, what's happening here, and I think people know this, and I, I don't want to speak out of turn on it, but we know a lot of properties been bought up in Bella Vista. At some point, a trigger's going to get pulled, and things are going to happen, and they're going to happen here fast. It's going to cause a lot of additional influx. More than likely.
Well, that's why.
A short-term middle market.
We're saying that.
And we're going to get inundated just like that.
Well, that's why we would put a cap in place. We're just trying to figure out where that cap is. Can I just poll John and come find out where he's at?
Sure.
I think everybody's weighed in.
I need to think about it. I, I see five hundred to seven fifty, somewhere in that range. I understand that.
All right, if you're based it on, like, on a population, but you, like I said, you object to density, but.
Well, it's thirty percent of the population, housing units.
I mean, the housing, and not population, but the housing units.
Percentage, yeah.
You got, you know, one in, what, one in twenty? Would that be your number?
Mine's one, one in twenty-five.
One in twenty-five? Man, that sounds like a reasonable number.
That would never exceed that. Even if, even if things got crazy like.
Example, six forty or seven fifty is where, really where the range is if you're looking at today.
So you add another, you add another five hundred houses, another five hundred houses are added to our, to the, to the city. I mean, then you, you're increasing it by?
Twenty.
You're increasing the number by, you add twenty more. That sounds reasonable to me, maybe not, but that sounds reasonable.
So, right, four percent is six hundred. That's what it is. If it's based on fifteen thousand.
Right.
And then if, I don't even know. What was our total new build last year?
Six hundred and, no, it was five hundred eighty-one, Doug?
Six hundred and sixty.
New home permitted last year?
Last year.
Five eighty-one?
Almost, almost.
Almost six hundred.
Six eleven.
It was six.
Was it six eleven?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
So that'd be twenty-four new ones, you had six hundred.
Yeah, Jason was saying you can't. He doesn't, doesn't like the idea of going by percent.
Well, I mean, if it's a percent of the fixed number, like Taylor said, the, you know, housing unit data from the last, you know, the twenty twenty US Census or something.
Yeah.
But your number's not going to change for ten years.
No.
And, I mean, if, if.
Not going to happen.
Yeah.
The fifty thousand is the water meter point.
I mean, so I, I would, I think it's preferable to have a hard number just for everyone to keep track. Okay, there's six hundred of them. That's the number. And you can change that number. You, you, you're not locked in forever and ever amen. You can adopt an ordinance the next month, that increases it by a hundred.
Yeah. Right now, current short-term rental owners are covered. No ways denying them anything, right?
Right.
We know we're at four sixty-two, at least.
Right.
That's where we are right now. Supposedly, here's some short-term rental owners. Some people are kind of dropping out of the market. Some people are coming on board. We don't really know that for fact. This is, that's the word. So, and two, we're going to take a few, a few out of it, you know, with the, uh, homes with the room and space, you know, so that'll kind of take the number down a little bit. So, you know, I will tell, I mean, you know, a lot of people I have conversations with, they want, they want a cap. They want to cap it where it is. They don't want to move, they want to grow anymore because they know how they're being impacted, okay? So we're not at five hundred, at least the count's not there right now, right? I mean, it's, it could be next month, whenever Granicus updates their numbers. But I wouldn't set it in any more than six hundred right now, for sure.
Agree.
No way.
I'll get on board for that.
And I'm going to take some flack over that. I can tell you right now.
We're all going to take flack no matter what.
I know, I'm just saying, right?
Yes. Well, would it, would it be appropriate to go back and take the census count for housing units?
Bella Vista doesn't have that data available in the census.
It's not available yet. The president hasn't signed off on the twenty twenty census.
Are you kidding?
Well, we have certain amounts of, because that one has a giant X next to it, that one specifically.
So what's, what's wrong with the water meter count?
We don't, we don't wire the number because we don't run the water system.
But they know how many hours. It's a definite number.
Yeah, it's a fixed number.
Yeah, we told us fifteen thousand.
For residential water meters, then you got a number.
That's probably what they're going to.
That's going to be accurate.
All right. Did you want to talk about how we might?
Yeah.
Manage density, sandwich, a sandwich rule or something?
Sandwich rule, if you got fewer, like cul-de-sacs, you've got so many of them, and you counted, how many? A bunch of them had four.
Well, streets, uh.
Yeah, the streets.
There's, I know, I know of a cul-de-sac that has three.
Yeah.
And they're just right there. And there was another house for sale, so they're.
Is anybody surrounded in that? Because if you're three short-term rentals together, nobody's bothered by that. So.
What's that?
Is anybody sandwiched by the short-term rentals?
He's right on the side of it. I mean, there's the three houses right there.
There's a lady in the audience who's sandwiched by seven. She's the only one left.
Yeah.
And her house is for sale because she, you know, doesn't want to put up with whatever.
Yeah, and I, and I don't blame her for that.
She lives by herself, there's nobody else close.
Right.
You know, and she's had problems with the ones next door, and she wasn't planning on leaving for years.
Am I correct?
It's been moved up, but like I said, she sits in the middle of seven.
Yeah.
Rentals. Rentals, short-term, all on number, number two T-box at Brittany.
As you think about density, it's not a matter of shutting down anybody who's operating a short-term rental today. It's, it's a go-forward.
Take place. One of them would be is that their permit gets pulled. You don't want, so. The other thing, you, you could restrict it on transfers of ownership.
Yeah.
They lose the permit, they transfer ownership. In other words, you can't sell the property as a, as a rental. You can own it as long as you want to, it'll still be there, but you can't sell it.
Is there a simple sandwich rule we could implement and then go forward with this? And before we get to, before we get too bogged down in too many density rules?
Well, the only two rules that, that I wrote up was density should not exceed two lodging units for every ten consecutive existing or vacant future lots because you might have another subdivision coming in. Not here today, we got lots of vacant land. So it'd be new created lots as well.
It can have to be contiguous, I would say.
Uh, it's a running thing, so you just go down the street, and lots may be wide on one side, they may be narrow on the other side, you count ten, you count ten lots or fourteen lots, as one suggestion is. And so many of those, so many of those, they might be side by side, they might sandwich somebody in, but in that running length as you go down the street. And so, and, and the GIS maps can easily take care of that for you. Well, if that gets in, I don't know, right off the bat. So. And then the other one was that if it was, the street had less than six lots, it would be no. And it doesn't prohibit them from being there today, it's just that we won't issue a new permit in that situation.
Well, one, let me just add this because you have a lot of leeway in this area, and you can adopt regulations that have a rational basis. It's, it is important for there to be some facts behind why, how you're pulling these numbers out. Why is this sandwiching a problem? You're, what, I mean, there needs to be some stuff in the record, we need to put a whereas clause. What is it about that that requires us to say, you can't do it? Because if we don't have a good reason, we can't really articulate it, then we need to really look about whether we need to implement that regulation.
There's no way to do that.
I don't want to live between two of them.
Well, that house in your neighborhood may come in and they, it may not be an Airbnb, but it may not be somebody you want living there either.
Oh, that's true. You definitely have, I kid you there, but I'm just saying, does anybody, come on. Does anybody here sitting here today anywhere, you know, want to have an Airbnb on both sides of their residence?
It should be really easy to articulate why.
Huh?
It should be very easy to articulate why.
We could. I'm, look, I'm not advocating for against right now, I'm just saying, does anybody? It's kind of like, to me, some things, we hold these truths to be self-evident. I didn't say that, but some things just make sense. Does it make any sense to put seventeen people in a thirty-two hundred square foot home, a single-family residential home? To me, no. Now, maybe somebody else can rationalize it, but I can't. Does anybody in here want to live in between two short-term rental properties?
I don't really care. It's a different question. I don't care. They behave themselves, it's their right to live any place they want.
I do, I care.
And buy them.
You know? Yeah, right. Sure, that's the answer.
I've, I've got one on my street, Doug, and it's unoccupied probably half the time. And when it is occupied, it's, it's small groups, it's not, it's not the Locklom and Party House, so.
Who said that?
Yeah, you did.
It was Ellen.
It's Ellen.
What about, what about townhomes?
It's the townhomes that you're talking about, right? Where the lady's trapped.
Mm-hmm. She's moving six or seven years earlier than planned. So are, are, are regulations going to apply to townhomes?
Any home that's in the city, sure. It's a rooftop.
But, but the issue is.
The ordinance says, if you go back, it applies to short-term rentals. Short-term rentals means a residential dwelling unit, portion of a dwelling unit, or bedroom within a dwelling unit leased or rented to guests for a period of less than thirty consecutive days. And then elsewhere, we've limited, um, well, some drafts have limited to say that it doesn't apply to owner-occupied, but that's not across the board, so that's what it applies to. So if it fits within that definition, that it's, it applies.
So the, the Town Home Association guidelines or regulations that they have pertaining to that particular?
They don't have any.
Something to do.
Not for occupancy and what they're doing.
Not for occupancy.
Not for what they're doing.
POA doesn't, ACC doesn't?
No, I, I, the Town Home Association doesn't have, I mean, they've got guidelines, they're supposed to have guidelines pertaining to the landscaping and the, and the maintenance, and the maintenance of the, the maintenance of the facility. And that's something I've heard from a lot of people that live in the townhomes from a lot of people that live in the townhomes, is that the, the people that are buying the townhomes for short-term rentals, uh, make no effort to maintain them. They're just strictly buying them for the income stream, that's it. They're not going to put any money into them, and it's, I keep telling them that, hey, that's a Town Home Association issue, not something that we can deal with, but, but, you know, can be, I mean, there's not anything there for us to deal with, is there?
No.
Well, you mean as far as requiring them to fix up the townhome, or to make repairs, or what?
Anything, anything pertaining to the, to the, to the maintenance of that townhome. I mean, if, if we got a, a structure out here that, oh, that's in disrepair, I mean, it's, you know, obviously it's not in disrepair, then we got guidelines to deal with it. No, we don't have guidelines to do with it, so it can just collapse around itself and do with it.
Yes, we absolutely do have the ability to have unsafe buildings, and notice the owner, and to condemn it, whether it's a townhome, or residential structure, or commercial structure, we absolutely have to...
He said disrepair, he didn't say unsafe.
He said fall one in.
Yeah, so there's a big difference between...
Big difference in sodding down off...
That's true.
And disrepair.
Right. One may need paint terribly, and, and, and still good, you know?
Yeah, and when the stuff unsuits us, maybe you weren't going to...
Well, I, I know about one, that the fireplace was not, the fireplace was not working, so the owner put some type of a cap on, on top of the, on top of the fireplace, on top of the chimney, didn't do anything to prevent it from starting a fire in the, in the fireplace, but putting some kind of a cap, or some type of piece of metal or something on top of the chimney, so that it, you know, no smoke could get in there.
And you're trying to say, he never told a renter to start a fire?
I don't, my knowledge, it's, that's...
Or fool him.
Yeah. Well, you get smoke in the house really quick.
Yeah. Okay, so, we're, I mean, I think... I think we've addressed...
Six hundred or twelve?
So do we like the no-sandwich rule, or not? I think we should keep it in play, let's think about it.
Me too. I do.
Yeah, initially, you're going to have to do it by attrition.
So...
You know, the license, both of them.
I mean, I don't know how, what consensus of how everybody at the balance of accounts would like to handle this, we could, what we could do, because this group of folks over here, myself and Jason, have sat down, and we've gone through point by point a couple times, and written this through. I think probably, if it's okay, we'll do that same thing, we'll put one back together again, from the points that we talked about today, and then we'll bring it forward, and maybe have one more conversation before a work session. And, and don't wait for a work session, I mean, that's really, kind of, because you got other things on the agenda as well.
Well, let's, let's make an effort, if we do that, to have it in the evening, just to satisfy...
That's half of the galley.
That's fine. So, that's what we'll do. Now, I'll tell you, I may not be available this week, because we've got plans for going out of town Thursday, but we could, Jason, what's good for you?
I'm gone next week.
All next week?
Starting Friday and all next week.
We got nineteen days before the next work session. And we, you know, we could kind of sit down and do a rough draft, you know, and then have, then bring Jason in, and try to cover everything.
Take a little time to write it up, anyway.
Yeah, just to make the...
I want to be involved in the writing.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Doug, do we want to kind of recap what are some of the... They'll start writing without me. There are some of the things that are up in the area, like, I don't know, did we ever settle on the septic inspection versus the maximum capacities?
That should be dealt with elsewhere, in a different code, not here.
So therefore, we would have maximum occupancy based on septic capacities?
And the legitimate count, as Mr. Murphy pointed out.
We'll do what Richard said.
There are three, three per bedroom.
I thought it was going to be based on the, on the fire code, fire code.
Well, there's two, there's two standards.
Well, that was for sewer. You were talking about sewer when you said that, about the one person for two hundred feet, or whatever.
That's, that's an occupancy, your density standard.
Yeah, I'm understanding that we don't, I'm, I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, we don't want to go down the road of septic inspection, or, in any way on this, but we potentially want to look at septic issues citywide related to multiple uses in general, and we obviously would apply that at some point in the future.
Is that what I understood? That's not what I understood either.
Because you're looking for a septic inspection. Yes, I thought we agreed that it's going to be like every two years.
Well, you could talk about the initial pumping of the tank, which would have some partial inspection.
I like the inspection idea, but I like it in place of occupancy limits. If you bring your inspection and show you've got a healthy septic...
So no occupancy limits at all?
Not if you have a healthy septic system.
Oh, no, no, I'd never buy any of them. So you can put seventeen people in a...
That violates their septic permit.
Yeah.
It violates the permit, period. People per bedroom.
All right, then it has to stay there. I wouldn't do both, I don't know why you'd do both.
What's wrong with the, what's wrong with the fire code thing, there's so many people...
Well, you have, you have both of those codes. One is, one, one has to do with the size of your building, if you got a thirty-six hundred square foot house with two bedrooms in it, that means you only got six people that you can have in there. Well, actually, with that size of house, you can have eighteen in there, by the fire code.
Yes, if we're going to limit their occupancy, and it sounds like that's where this is headed, if we're going to limit their occupancy, let them be the responsible party for their septic system. It's their cost, it's their, it's their problem if it does impact.
We need to regulate that on a different, on a different...
If we're going to regulate that, let's regulate it for everybody.
Yeah.
It has to work, yeah. Build it universally, and then put a section that covers this, because it can stand alone, and because we can just incorporate it into this one. Then we can cover both, and bring them in.
Okay, so I'm going to ask my question again. Do you, Doug, do you want to have septic inspection requirement in yours, and then, if that's what you want to propose, because we're talking about your proposal at this point, and they can offer amendments to take it out?
I'll probably include it in there, yeah.
Okay.
And then if you want to take it out, you know, we can make amendments to that.
What's that?
We can debate it.
Yeah.
See what we got, see, put on paper what we've actually got today.
Yep.